Good morning, welcome back to our budget workshops. We recessed yesterday, so we will continue this morning. Let's have our roll call, please. And I understand Mr. Johnson is on his way. Do we have a motion? We approve our agenda?
Same as second.
Motion second, let's vote. Thank you. Mr. Manager, did you have any comments before we get started on our presentations this morning?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board members. Had a couple of follow-up things. One from the first day of the board workshops and then a couple from yesterday. The first handout we're giving you is, can you show up and get a copy of that?
Oh, yeah.
Is the request for information regarding the sheriff's vehicle purchases for the current fiscal year of fiscal year 1213. I'll let this get passed out. On this illustration, you can see where they purchased 24 vehicles. Twelve of those 24 vehicles were actually as part of the budget process last year at a general fund dollars. The balance of those were, majority of those were drug seizure funds they purchased. And then they had one vehicle that was half general fund and half drug seizure funds. You can see we're showing the vehicle number in the first column, the model year, the make, the purchase date, the purchase price, whether it was new, whether it was used, where it's assigned, whether it's patrol, detention, the chief, the sheriff, narcotics and so forth. And then again in the last column, the funding source. And then there's some footnotes there on the bottom. The three K-9 units are expected to be in service in June, about next month. And of these, there were 17 that were turned in for sale or salvage, of which I believe some of them we were not able to sell because they were in such bad shape. But we did, I think we had above dozen that we split between GovDeals.com and Greenville Auto Auction and have compared that process of which, that analysis, we still have owe you a report on that.
Any questions or comments about this report?
Mr. Chairman, I see they really purchased 20 new vehicles in all. That correct? And I see there also that where they got used cars, some of those they paid as much in there for the used cars as they did the new cars.
They actually purchased 18.
18, I thought it was eight and 12.
Because there's 24 total.
Yeah, if you're right, it'd be 18 then. But it's 18 then on that. And all of those used cars, they must be for drug people?
Three of them are for narcotics and one is for the detention center for a transport vehicle and the other is for grant position for investigations.
But they didn't get them from a narcotic, right? I think that's what he's asking.
How many narcotic cars did they have there? Because you know they got several already, that would be...
I'm not sure if these narcotics replaced any that they had in place.
Well, that's what I'm talking about. They already got them, you know, they keep them.
But they get these, the used vehicles, they actually at the end of the month go to government auction.
They get them that way.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, is...
There, one observation, and I don't know if you all know the answer to this. I see that there are three Tahoe's at the bottom and they're all new and they're 2012 models and they're 25,775. And then I see the two Tahoe's that went to the sheriff and his chief officer, they were 33. That's $8,000 difference.
Different, yeah.
And both of them say state contract. That's kind of interesting. I don't know why and where you'd pay $8,000 more on two vehicles when you...
It's well eclipsed.
As a guess, Mr. Chairman, the bottom line talks about the equipment on them and I guess there could be a variation of 5,000 to 8,000 in variation of equipment.
That's a lot of equipment. Okay, very good.
Can I ask one more question? Did you say that the K-9 patrol was coming on, but they haven't been driving them this last year?
They've got, currently as I understand it, they have old vehicles for the K-9 patrol. These three replacement vehicles will be coming in in June to replace the existing vehicles.
But I think they've already been purchased and my question was who's been driving them this last year?
They have not been driven yet.
Oh, okay.
It took 90 days to order them and then it's taken some time to outfit.
I would like to know this for my own benefit. We have three vehicles for K-9. How many times during the year are these K-9 used? Follow me? I think you're going to be surprised. With three vehicles, that means you gotta, how many dogs? You gotta have three sets of dogs there if you've got three vehicles and you don't need them. I gotta do a little, somebody's gotta do a little explaining that to me. Mr. Chairman, I think this information we have here enlightens me a lot and that's what I was interested in and I think that piggyback to some of the questions that you asked.
That is correct.
Could be informative.
And the other thing that I had not heard, the number 24 before. I had heard 20 and 21 and it's really 24 vehicles here. Okay, any other questions or comments about this report? Anything else, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. Next one is on the, two things on Pats, Pitt area transit system. The first thing is a revenue breakout, just so you'll see how their revenue, and then we'll talk about the duplicated trip request from Commissioner Coulson in just a moment. The single sheet, this eight and a half by 11, deals with the Pats revenue. This illustrates that for next fiscal year beginning July 1, it shows their revenue breakout for a total of $924,367. Where approximately a third of that is state or federal funds at 283,357. Two-thirds comes from fairs, 612,200, the county funds at 26,310, the miscellaneous funds at 2,500. Admittedly, the two-thirds fairs, that's 612, there is a mix of probably some federal and state dollars that come in there to whether it's council on aging or DSS, agencies that may be transporting folks who are on dialysis or as such, but we're not what we would call the steward of those funds. They're just passed through to purchase the trips, but did want to give you that breakout. On the larger sheet of data that shows the transport activity, this is showing it for the current fiscal year beginning July and then through April. And we show on here the trips and these are the, correct me if I'm wrong here, Dwayne, these are the...
The agencies?
Duplicated.
Right. Well, the trips are actually duplicated passengers. So where you had passengers on your sheet yesterday, the trips will show duplication of those passengers. So it shows the actual utilization of the system.
So you've got like for each month, start with July there, the first one shows the total miles and then the total number of trips. So in July with all those agencies listed in the left-hand column, you had in terms of miles, 35,515 miles and the total number of trips you had was 3,837. Then it follows all the way across through the April of this year. And then showing each whether council on aging, DSS, ECVC, the great system for the The DSS information that the board had asked for, they are still pulling that together for you and are expecting them to bring that up this morning, but once we get that, we'll present that to you. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, very good. We will start on our agenda this morning. The first thing we have is the Greenville Pitt Convention and Visitors Bureau and Mr. Schmidt is going to make that presentation to us.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, commissioners. Thank you for having me here this morning and wanted to give you an update on where our Convention and Visitors Bureau is heading over the next year. And you have your PowerPoint with some supplemental information as well. Just as a reminder, the CVA, we have several missions that we need to fulfill each year. Probably the most important is to create a positive economic impact for our community. We do that through the attraction of meetings, events, tournaments, leisure, reunions. We want to bring people into Pitt County and Greenville to spend money and enjoy our amenities. We also service travelers when they come in. We have an extensive list of convention services that we offer to meeting and event planners that are designed to save them both time and resources. We want to service our leisure travelers as well. That's extremely important when we get someone into our visitor center because we view that as a one-on-one marketing opportunity to educate them about Pitt County and the city of Greenville and those are invaluable. So we want to make sure that we provide them all the information that they need to have an enjoyable stay while they're here. We want to make sure that we're an information clearinghouse for both citizens and non-citizens. When we talk about being an information clearinghouse, we're talking about information on things to do in Greenville, ways to attract people from outside of Pitt County into Pitt County. We use a lot of various tools for that. We use social media, Facebook and Twitter. We have our calendar of events, our website. We have lots of different options that we use to get that information to individuals that are coming to the area for the first time and also for citizens looking for things to do. And of course, we want to be a partner in our local communities, both inside the city and in Pitt County, to foster economic growth. And I'll talk a little bit about that in just a minute, some of the things that we're looking at doing to create some new leisure opportunities for folks in this area. We are made, our members are made up of a 12-person authority. Our members are four hotel owners and operators. We have two hospitality-related positions on our authority board, four general citizens, two appointed by the county and two by the city. We have a city finance officer, city and county liaison and Mr. Webb, we appreciate your involvement on our board in the past and Mr. Coulson, we look forward to having you onboard in the future. And we also have a chamber of commerce appointee on our board. So we are governed and given direction by that authority and that membership. Just as a reminder and maybe more for the people watching at home, our Convention and Visitors Authority does not derive any revenue from the general fund, either from the city or from the county. Our occupancy tax, which is collected by our hotels and motels, is our sole source of funding. The occupancy tax that is collected at our hotels is a 6% occupancy tax. Out of that 6%, 3% goes to the debt retirement on the convention center. That leaves 3% and that 3% is actually divided again. 1% out of that 3% goes to market the convention center. It is actually given to the convention center, the exhibit hall managers group that runs the convention center for their marketing efforts. And as a result, we have 2% to work with to do what we need to do at our office. So we are funded solely on the occupancy tax. You know, that makes it sometimes a little difficult to forecast because you don't know from month to month what you're going to get, but we do have a good handle on that each month. And fortunately for us, and we're in a growing city and county and the industry from its 2008 and 2009 lows has continued to rebound. So we're comfortable that our occupancy taxes will continue to increase in the future. Our budget approval process does go through an extensive checks and balance system. Our executive committee has approved our budget. It's been through our full board. The city council was presented this budget on Monday night and we're here Wednesday morning to get your direction as well. So we do have a good checks and balance system for our budget approval process. I want to talk a little bit about revenues before I get into some of the things we're trying to accomplish with this budget year. I had stated just a couple of slides ago that our travel industry is continuing to increase in this area, but if you look at your packet information, you'll actually notice that our revenues versus this fiscal year, occupancy tax collections versus last fiscal year, were down 10%. And I wanted to explain why. It's not due to poor performance, it's not due to the economy. We had a special situation in 2011 and that was called Hurricane Irene. And when Hurricane Irene came through, Greenville's hotels were actually the hub and Greenville was made the hub of the insurance industry's recovery efforts, adjusting efforts and so forth. So when you look at occupancy tax revenues between 2011 and 2012, specifically in the months of September and October, there is a huge variation. In September of 2011, some of our hotels ran an occupancy of 95% for the whole month. That's unheard of. And occupancy tax collection revenues for September 2011 were over $105,000. That was because of that influx of aid and also the insurance adjusters making Greenville their home and those hotel rooms are home for about two months. So the $105,000 occupancy tax receipts in September of 2011 were about $35,000 to $40,000 over what we would normally see. The same was true for October of 2011. We saw a much higher receipts in occupancy tax because of the recovery efforts of Hurricane Irene. So just wanted to make you aware of that. If you look at the information and say, hey, why are they down 10%? Because in 2011, we had just a very uncommon situation and a large increase. So that is really the reason there. Because we are funded through the occupancy tax system, we do monitor each month what's coming in and we do adjust our budgets accordingly based on those revenues that come in from the hotel motel occupancy tax. So we'll always monitor what's going on. So just as a summary, you're looking at your budget year. This past year, we were at $846,000 for occupancy tax collections because of that influx of occupancy due to Hurricane Irene's rooms. This year, we've adjusted it back down and that's basically a normal correction and we're going to be working with $810,000 this year, which is our portion of the occupancy tax that we get. And we are going to have some new programs that I'll talk to you about to put in place and we'll be using a little bit of our fund balance to make some of these things work because it is a very important year for us at the Convention and Visitors Bureau for several reasons. One of the things that we're going to do is looking at a new position. We have a lot going on in Greenville and Pitt County. One of the things that's happened over the last several years that I've been in Greenville and Pitt County is that our competitive set has changed. When I first got to the bureau several years ago, our competition was mostly in eastern North Carolina, but as this county has grown and this city has grown, our competition is now Raleigh and Charlotte and Greensboro and Asheville, Wilmington, places like that, the bigger cities. My job and part of our job again is to create economic impact for our city and county and we compete with other cities to bring events here, to bring tournaments here, to bring conventions and meetings here. And we're also going to start to try to bring some leisure travel here as well. So we want to increase the number of advertising opportunities we have, but we also want to increase the ability to communicate with outside agencies. We have never had a communications manager on staff. If you look at the other bureaus in this state that are larger than us, we're the, actually the 10th largest city now in our state, they all have someone on their CVB staff that works with communications. So we would like to hire a part-time communications manager. That person's going to be responsible for many things, but basically one of the things is implementing a new advertising strategy. Many of you are aware that the city is going through a rebranding process where we've brought in consultants and we're looking at a way to rebrand Greenville for lots of different reasons, to take it to the next level. So we're going to have some new advertising strategies involved with that rebranding process. Website management is very, very important. We have four staff members at the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Each has a specific role. None of those roles really involve communications or public relations. We all divide that responsibility up. So we're looking forward to a part-time person working with our website and redevelopment of that. A lot of different public relations responsibilities. They'll be working with our social media. They'll be writing articles and working with press releases in an effort to create more coverage for our destination. We want to develop an extensive media library for us and for other agencies in Greenville and Pitt County to use. We want to start soliciting people to write stories about Greenville and Pitt County. Travel writers are a wonderful source of free advertisement when you have someone coming down and writing about the history or culture of your area. So we want to engage those people and find those people and bring them down. We want to monitor our press coverage so we know what people are saying about Greenville and Pitt County and really get to be involved more with the media and getting our message out, not only locally but statewide. So developing statewide media relationships, especially with people like UNC TV, that we can get positive press coverage for our area. So it's a part-time position, it's not a full-time position. The reason it's part-time is we're trying to ease into that. It also saves on benefits and other things as well. So we're looking for that. We're also going to be looking to increase our advertising a little bit. Greenville and Pitt County has never been a true leisure destination because of the beaches and so forth. People will take vacations there, but we really feel with the growth that Pitt County and Greenville can be a hub of leisure activity, restaurants, culture, arts, entertainment, shopping. We haven't had the personnel or the budget in the past to really get it to the leisure market. We focus mostly on conventions and meetings. The convention center's been successful, it's off the ground and we're looking at, possibly looking at more leisure opportunities through leisure and travel trade shows and again, working with travel writers, working with social media. Research says one in four people get their information through cyberspace now, whether it's a website or on Twitter or on Facebook or Foursquare or Pinterest, whatever it might be. So we need to use those tools to develop our leisure destination. Apps are another thing that we're going to be looking at, developing apps for our area, shopping apps, restaurant apps, all for our smartphone users and our tablet users. And that's a very, very important piece of the puzzle. Again, when we look at an increased line item for advertising, that's again for the rebranding. We're going to need a little bit of extra funds that we put in our budget for new creative. We use certain amount of ads for a certain amount of time, then we need to recreate those ads based on what the message we are trying to get across. And again, we talked about the social media presence and the web-based advertising, that's very important as well. So that's one of the areas that we're looking to increase a bit in our budget over last year's advertising. Tourism projects and incentives, that's something that we have not had in a line item in several years that we would like to put back in. It gives us flexibility is what it gives us. One of the missions that we have is to work with the community and be a partner with that community. And so if we have some funds available for certain tourism projects that meet our goals of enhancing the image of Greenville and Pitt County and increasing leisure travel to the area, we're willing to listen and be a partner at the table to try to accomplish those two things. We have a lot of folks that have a lot of good ideas. I've talked to the folks in Uptown Greenville, they've got some ideas about creating an arts and entertainment district. I'm talking to a gentleman out in Aiden who has some interest in developing some possible tourism out that way. So those are things that we want to look for in this next budget year to possibly partner with our local folks to increase travel and tourism into the area. And we also want to have a little bit of incentive flexibility for our conventions and meetings. There are a lot of times when we have convention planners come through for site tours and generally the perception of what Greenville in Pitt County is versus when they get here, especially if they're from the western part of the state, are two different things. And they're very excited and very pumped up when they get here and they look at what we have as far as amenities and facilities. But having said that, we are competing against other cities. And for instance, the North Carolina Division of Soil and Water Conservation Districts were here for a site tour not too long ago and they mentioned that their president's reception was always sponsored by the local convention bureau. We didn't have any money in our line item for sponsorships. And he had a choice to go several different places that would sponsor his president's reception. It was only a $750 sponsorship. We agreed to find a way to do that and they're coming here in 2016. So it was a $750 sponsorship that made all the difference in the world to that meeting planner and it's about a $300,000 economic impact into our local economy when that convention comes in 2016. So we want to have just a little bit of flexibility to say, listen, if we can help you here and it makes a big difference in the long run, we want to be able to do that. There's been some discussions about the CVA relocating into the Uptown Greenville area. We are currently inside the convention center. We've been there ever since the convention center has opened. It is a wonderful place to be and it may not always be the best place for our walk-in visitors and the place to have a visitor's center because when you have a full capacity at the convention center and there's no place to park, a lot of our visitors decline to come and get information and we miss that one-on-one marketing opportunity with our visitors. So we have been looking at the idea of relocating into the Uptown Greenville area. There are some funds set aside just in case that happens for lease, for rent, because we currently don't pay rent where we are. We do pay electric and janitorial and things like that. It's not on our front burner, but to be safe and be prudent, we've put it in the line item to make sure that we have that just in case something arises that we may want to look at. And then of course, 1% of our budget does go to the convention center. We have that 6%, that pie's split up, 3% to the debt retirement of the building, 1% of that last 3% goes to the convention center directly for marketing the convention center. We're estimating about $267,000 plus to the convention center in this next budget year. Funds are not allocated upfront, we're all at once. They are dispersed to the convention center on a monthly basis. So they submit their marketing efforts to us. From the previous month, we look at that and then our executive committee looks at that and we sign off and they reimburse that particular month for the convention center. But they are entitled through the interlocal agreement to 1% of that occupancy tax and that's what we're estimating that will be for this next fiscal year. So we just want to make sure that we're good stewards of our funds that come in through the occupancy tax. And at this point, we're excited about some of the few new things that we're going to be doing to try to enhance both the image of Greenville and Pitt County and also start getting some leisure travelers into this area because our amenities are growing at a very fast pace and we really think that there's a whole group of people in eastern North Carolina that if they knew about everything that we have, would come and shop and spend money here. So that's the goal for the leisure. But at this point, we appreciate everything that you guys do and your support and I'll be happy to take any questions that you have.
Anyone have any questions, or Mr. James?
I have several, but number one is when will it be paid off the mortgage you said? And I took notice you said you brought in about 800,000 plus and you get half of that amount of money, so you're getting 400 some thousand dollars to go on the mortgage that you have, that the city has of course. When would it be paid off?
To my, best of my knowledge, we're probably looking at about seven more years. Basically about $500,000 a year is paid against that bond from what I understand by the city. So you're looking at about seven more years because there's a little bit over 3 million that's still owed on that bond if I'm correct. So you're looking at about seven years.
Well, you know, $400,000 a year is pretty good. What I was doing is looking, once you get the full amount, that's going to give you additional funds to take and to do those things that you really would like to take and to do.
We've got that circled on our calendar.
Yes, and the next thing that I'm very much concerned and of course, the county has a lot invested in too, is the village of yesteryear that's out there. We would like very, I would hope this board supports me and you all getting more involved. We're getting ready to have a big get-together out there as a matter of fact.
On the 30th, yes, sir.
Yes, and I would like to see you all have an input as to what, how we can go and make that place a better place for people to come. Because I know when people go to a convention, they carry their wives, they've got to have somewhere to go. Well, out there in that one spot, you have the council on aging, you have all that athletic stuff there, you have that, you've got a great deal going on for you. And we need to have that kind of organized to say, look, we can send you a bus load, you can spend a half a day in this area just visiting. And I don't know how many of the county commissioners have gone to that village of yesteryear, but it is really, they're working as a matter of fact, they're starting a second fundraising on it and they are ready, we've got some dedicated people. I hope that you all, well, I guess what I'm getting around to, get involved in it and make sure that we are on the right direction to take and to look out for the future for the convention center and so forth.
It's a wonderful resource that we have. I've talked to Ms. Honeycutt several times. We've written letters of support through their grant, especially the last one, they're trying to get a nice grant from Lowe's. So we've been involved in the backend, kind of quietly, supporting them in their grant efforts, but you are right, sir, I'll be out there on the 30th.
And kind of look to the future because you all... And kind of look to the future because you all, you know more about it. Although Ms. Honeycutt, they, I don't need to tell you, they are.
Yes.
They're dedicated to that project.
They are.
And see, see, I needed was one more thing I had. Well, I thought I talked too much.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Ward?
Thank you very much for your presentation and I'm happy that the convention center is moving forward because it's kind of a long time coming and getting started. One of the marketing things that I, I would like for us to focus on is, you know, we're always, when we're watching TV, we see very quick ads about performances in Asheville or in Raleigh, particularly in the Raleigh-Durham Chapel Hill area, musical performances or whatever. Anyone, and I know we have a lot of citizens in Pitt County who go to all the performances at the university. And if you've ever been to one, I've never been to one ever and been disappointed, they are just, you know, top of the line. And when we used to do the summer theater, a lot more plays and brought people in from New York and whatever to perform and to direct. I just wonder, you know, if that, just think about, I feel like if that would be put out there, certainly in the east on some of the TV shows, it'd be select, I mean, not TV shows, but stations, to attract some of those people. Because a lot of people from this area go regularly to, they buy season tickets to some of the events. So, that's just an idea, but I appreciate what you all have done and just keep moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Webb?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Ward actually covered what I was going to talk about, performing arts and, and those kind of cultural events that draw a crowd to DPAC. And, and we do have facilities here that aren't advertised. I hear DPAC advertisements continuously on the radio. And, and though we don't have a, a facility dedicated, like the university has a very good program, and I don't see where it would hurt to advertise our university, bring people, because that leisure travel is where people do spend the most money, gas, food, hotel, and all things that benefit our local economy. And, and I agree with Commissioner Ward, I'd like to see a little more focus on that on, instead of looking to maybe build something new, capitalizing on what we have. Because it just seems like we're in this, this odd phase where we're large enough to need things, but not quite large enough to support things.
I call it, we're in a tweener right now.
Right.
We're between.
Exactly.
And we are, because we're, our competitive sets changed and we're.
But, at the same time.
It's an interesting time.
But, we do have those strengths and we do have similar facilities that I think that we could accentuate and, and maybe help bridge the gap until we do hit that phase where we're ready for.
And I think that's why that, that part-time position is so key for us, because we've got to have the right person to identify, you know, we, we don't want to just throw money at advertisements or, you know, this program or that program. We need to have a person that, that can identify, this is where your target is, this is where we need to, to, to focus on. But, you're exactly right. We're, we're doing extremely well in the convention and meetings market, extremely well. We have an excellent reputation throughout the state. And now, it's time to, to start looking at this leisure component. So, we, we're definitely looking at that.
Thank you.
And I'd love to see an arts and entertainment district somewhere in this, in the city. That'd be kind of fun to have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Carlson?
Andrew, I noticed that you're using $166,000 from fund balance.
Yes.
I don't know how big your fund balance is, but it looks like about 40 of it goes to salary, about 30 more goes towards advertising, 22 towards utilities, general leases and things like that. 50,000 for tourism projects, 10,000 for the convention projects. Now, this is one-time money, it, it seems that's funding, because that came to 150-plus of the 166. Are you anticipating that by doing these things, that it's going to actually raise your revenue enough to be able to cover that next year?
Well, that's a good question and I had the same, same concern at the city council meeting. That, a lot of that is a one-time and not a reoccurring bump that we're, that we're looking at. The advertising especially, if you look at the advertising line, line item, it's very significantly increased. That's mainly due to our rebranding efforts, because we're going to have a whole new message that we have to recreate. We have to do some redevelopment on the website to focus in with that same rebranding message. So, that's a lot of that's one-time. There is, there's a line item for rent and so forth that will likely not be used. It's in there as a safety valve, to be quite honest with you. So, I don't anticipate that. Our part-time position, even though it's, it's listed as a full year, it won't be a full year. But, but what I did was to cover the expenses to show, to, to balance, is put those things in there. So, I would not anticipate that we would get anywhere near that $976,000 threshold. But, I did want to show it for disclosure purposes and accuracy purposes.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Zane?
I, I want to go further on what Commissioner Ward was talking about. The plays and things that we have here, you know, we're big now, the med school, hospital, now people know about us all over the United States and everywhere. And the reason I'm talking on this is some of my family live off. And I go, and they go to plays like 300 and 400 miles to see these big plays and so forth. And I'm not so big. Why don't we push things for that in advertising, not here in Pitt County, but we can compete with Raleigh, so to speak. And, you know, they're doing it all the time now. And let the people know that we do have all of these things here in Greenville, North Carolina, and that we are alive and well. And I think by doing that, certainly the business, and that's what the convention center is all about, is business, bringing it to the merchants here in Pitt County. But, we need to let the people know what we are, what we offer, and things such as that. And I hope that we can, this person you're talking about will, not just in Pitt County, but you're going to have these plows in all of these rest areas. You see them, you trap all over, go it all the way, and you'll find them in rest areas, advertising of what that is counted as a do it.
And we'll never, just to let you know, we, we do very little in Pitt County, because when we have people in our own county spending money, that's just displacement money. They can spend it anywhere they want.
And I realize that.
So, yeah, we want to make sure we're looking outside.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Commissioner Owens?
I think, you know, it's very easy to sit here and critique what other agencies do. It's one of the best presentations I've had and I want to commend you and your staff for a job well done, because.
Thank you.
If you reflect back as to how things were a few years back, you're, you're way ahead of the game.
Thank you very much.
Very good.
Any additional questions or comments? I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Or, and/or comment. My favorite magazine is Our State Magazine. And I know that the Convention and Visitors Bureau always has a, has an advertisement in there. I always turn to the back of that magazine to see what events are happening across the state. And I am always a little disappointed at what, at what is happening in Greenville, because I know that we have a whole lot more going on than is advertised in that section. Who coordinates that for the county and the city? Does that come through your convention bureau?
Well, with Our State, we do advertise in Our State. And one of the things we're looking at doing in this upcoming year is developing some apps that are actually conjoined with Our State Magazine. So, the Our State readers have an application and go on their phones and tablets and get information. When you look at the back of that, Mr. Garrus, what Our State does is they, if you go to the, the Division of Travel and Tourism website, there's a, there's a component of that called extranet. And that's where we go and other destinations go and put our calendar of events. And so, what Our State does is, and if you look on there, there's thousands of events every month. And so, Our State goes and probably picks and chooses what they want to see up there based on some different factors. So, I would, it, it's hit or miss what you're going to see in the back of that. We don't choose it, Our State chooses it. They say, you know, we're going to take those, these, based on what Travel and Tourism has for this month, and we're going to stick that in the back of the magazine. So, you know, we, not every event that's taking place is in the back of that magazine, for sure.
Well, it's interesting that they're the ones that make the decision.
They do.
I would like for us to have more input in that, because I look at some of the smaller communities and their list is, is bigger than our list. And I would like to see that expanded. If you could encourage them in some way to say, let's start putting more of our events, because some of our, our events are very significant that are not listed there, that would attract visitors from across the state.
Money talks.
Well, our representative from Our State, her name is.
So, if you need a little money to help get that list expanded, call Mr. James.
He's giving out money, I got college tuition due.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thanks for your time.
Fine presentation. Okay, the next item on our agenda is our Pitt County Development Commission. We want to welcome Mandy Moore to our group this morning. And I see she brought her assistant, Wanda Yuhas. Wanda Yuhas is going to make the presentation.
Thanks a lot. See how this is going to be.
Also, I'd like to recognize one of our board members, Brenda Jarman, with us this morning. I also thank you for being here.
Ms. Jarman is the Vice Chair of the Development Commission Board. Our chairman is out of town. So, they are, are here to let you know that the board that you appointed is in support of the things that we do and the budget that we are presenting. Let's see, I need to get to my presentation here. That's, yeah, I got it. Before I get started on the presentation proper, I want to let you know that what you will hear this morning does not include the ASMO announcement. That was the most recent one. That's a $93 million announcement. That's 200 jobs. Beyond that, the company has said they think there will be additional jobs. The Japanese tend to be conservative about sharing those kinds of numbers, so they are not comfortable with our saying, here's an additional number that we think we will have. I also want to mention that specifically, because although we had many partners involved in that process, including GUC, the Community College System, and our own community college, the Pitt County Committee of 100, the consultant working the project stated repeatedly that it was the work that our commissioners were willing to do in terms of the support package we put together and in terms of the additional training dollars that you were willing to supply that really made the difference to securing that project. Our budget request for 2013, 2014, and I'm going to be very number-heavy here, is $1,114,413. Our personnel expenditures, as you will see, are $361,727. We have four staff members, all of whom have not only bachelors, but either hold master's degrees or have coursework completed for master's degrees. We also all have the basic economic development class and three of us have the coursework completed to be certified economic developers. The operating expenses for the Development Commission, you will see, are $201,595. That includes, you know, again, as you see, marketing, travel, any dues and subscriptions. That's organizations like IAMC, attendance at Site Selector's Guilds meetings. We have found that more and more projects are being handled by consultants, not necessarily through our Department of Commerce. In order for us to have face time to spend with them, it means attending those events. You will see that the largest item in our budget are our incentive payments at $498,859. That includes grants directly to companies. It includes Pitt-Greenville Airport Incentive Program and county-wide water and sewer system improvements. You will find as we move through that infrastructure support has been a major part of what the county has done. The expenses for our Technology Enterprise Center are $52,232. We provide basic services there, utilities, building maintenance, telephone, and the security alarm system. Our revenues, our primary source of revenue is from the industrial development tax at We also have revenue from the Technology Enterprise Center from the rent at that facility. I'm going to break down those funding sources a bit for you. We are the only county in North Carolina that levies a dedicated industrial development tax. There are 29 counties that have the statutory authority to do so. We are the only one who does it. Our legislation does allow for up to 3 cents levy for industrial development. As Mr. Garrus has reminded us, it also allows for up to a dollar and a half in ad valorem taxes, but we don't charge the whole thing. Our current industrial development tax is at .7 cents. That's expected to generate the amount that was shown, the $807,913. And you will see here the percentage of that, 62% or $498,859, I'm sorry, $859, that is for those economic incentive payments that we have obligated ourselves to. Those, of course, are paid only if those companies pay their taxes and reach their job totals. They are performance-based. We do not provide cash upfront and then hope that something materializes. 97 out of 100 counties have some type of industrial development agencies and most do receive support from the public sector. 50 of those agencies are purely government agencies. They are departments of their counties. County ad valorem tax receipts, and this gives you some idea of the, the distance that there is here. And these numbers include incentives. They range from 1/20th of a cent to 6.45. And that's when you calculate that as a tax levy. And that information is available for only 81 counties, so that's the best number that we can give you. And you can see there at the bottom that the average levy for a county is 1.4 cents. The median is .73. Given that, as Andrew alluded, that we tend to be a median type of county, that's pretty consistent with where we would expect to be. The Technology Enterprise Center, I hope that all of you are familiar with. If not, we would love to give you a tour at some point. When textiles left Pitt County earlier than they left most places, air wage rates were a little higher. The prep shirt building, like most textile buildings, had low ceilings. We used that opportunity for the county to purchase that building and to convert it to the Technology Enterprise Center. The reason for making that a tech-based center is that we have developers in the private sector who provide commercial retail space. We did not want to compete with our private sector. We did not want to create problems for them. But, in terms of wet lab space or clean room space, that simply didn't exist. So, that was the reason for going in the direction we did. You can see at this point, we've expended $3.7 million on the purchase of the building and its renovations. Of that, $1.14 million came directly from the IDC fund that the commissioners allocated for that purpose. You can see the success rate, and this is again, what we would expect. Since 1995, the Enterprise Center has served 30 tenants. 10 of them, a third, are out of business, which is the expected rate. Six are operating in other locations. Four are operating in Pitt County as freestanding companies and 10 are still in the Technology Enterprise Center, including Pioneer Surgical. The building currently has 35,865 leasable square feet. Of that, 28,817 square feet are occupied. That's about 80% occupancy. Our board requested and Mr. Garrus has assisted us in asking the county to find other places for storage, so we can begin to reclaim some additional space. We do try to look to the future. So, for instance, Pitt Community College has its biotechnology labs and classes in that building. That has worked well in that those students get internships with companies that are out there. Certainly, the Community College hopes to build a science building. When that happens, then those spaces would be available for companies. And you can see that the rent expected from these tenants is the $306,500 for this next budget year. We wanted you to be able to see what the return has been on your direct investment from 20... from 2008 to 2012. That, needless to say, has been a time of recession, and there are some ups and downs, but I think you'll be pleased to see that we are in recovery. From 2008 to 2012, we had 1,163 new jobs created and 452.8 million invested. The new companies bringing part of that included Cable Network Associates, Ham Storage LLC, and Ioto USA, which is a Brazilian company. Expanded companies, and nationwide, 80% of job creation comes from the expansion of existing industries. So locally, and we've got these listed alphabetically, but they're from all over the county, Carolina Classics Catfish, Carolina Medical Products, Charmtex, Package Craft, The Roberts Company, Airmania, Figure Eight Technologies, Metrics, Attends, ASMO, and this is ASMO's warehousing expansion, not this most recent expansion, DSM Dynema, An Pharma, and NACO. Incentives paid directly to companies in the last five fiscal years, the $1.26 million to five individual companies. You will see our return on that. They have paid $9.8 million in taxes. So our return has been about a 7 to 1 return on what we have invested in those companies. If we look at our employment data, you see two different columns there. The first column that you see is the overall employment of people who live in Pitt County. So that's employment by place of residence. So if I have a job, whether I'm driving to Raleigh or I'm working in Pitt County, it's reflected there. And you will see that in 2007, we were at 74,715. You will see that there's a little bit of drop in there, but then you will see that by the time we get to 2012, we have not only rebounded, but we are at 81,000 mark. Now, if we look by place of employment, and that's that other column, these are... And we have only two sectors here. We have manufacturing employment and healthcare employment, so you can see how those track. You will see that in 2008, when the recession hit, that we started to feel the pain of that in 2009. That's our lowest employment number in terms of manufacturing. And you will see, and we're in the third quarter of 2012, so we don't know what our fourth quarter numbers will bring that total to. But by 2012, we have already recovered what we lost during that recessionary period. Because I've had a few questions about what the commission has... Or the County Board of Commissioners have done historically and what money has been spent on. That is the reason for this last section. Since 1987, over $10 million in economic development expenditures and incentives have been provided from ad valorem taxes through the IDC. You will see that the largest part of that has been for utility enhancements, the $5,648,398. And I won't read all of those numbers for you, but you will see our largest one was the wastewater treatment plant expansion related to Borough's Welcome at $4.2 million. That was a sterile products facility that some of you will remember. That looks like a lot of money. It's one of those times it was a good investment for us, that the sterile products facility has been one of their prime areas of production and expansion. They are currently manufacturing a drug there for women with breast cancer. It is the only place that is manufactured. It is for women who have metastasized cancer. It is working very well. So sometimes, an investment that may seem on the large side has long-term benefits, both in terms of jobs created and the tax base that has been expanded. You will see two there that we are still paying on. The county water system improvements, we are paying the $130,000 you see there is two-years payment. We've got 18 years left to pay on that. CMSD sewer improvements, $36,000, and that, again, represents two years, and we have another 18 years to pay on that. So those infrastructure improvements are throughout the county as well. You'll see the gas line extension to Worthington Park, so it's wherever the infrastructure needs are. Often, you folks as commissioners are also putting money into those projects, sometimes more than we are. But that, in many cases, the only way to get infrastructure to these parks, to particular facilities, is if we pay. You'll also see road, rail, and site improvements at $485,072 with the breakdown. Rail spurs, $175,000. Access roads, $145,000. Site development, $164,000. We have also spent $1,967,687 on one North Carolina matches and then our economic development grants. As you know, in North Carolina, we do not rebate or abate taxes, which is what many of our neighboring states do. South Carolina and Georgia particularly will say, "You just don't have to pay taxes." So in our case, we don't do that. The program we have developed is an economic development grant, and we will say, "If you have paid all of your taxes, if you have hired all the people that you are going to hire, that you have told us you will hire, then we will grant you this financial support for your facility." But as I mentioned earlier, it is performance-based. If a company says, "I'm going to create 200 jobs, and I'm going to spend $75 million," and they don't, they don't get the money. Supplemental workforce training, most often that has gone directly to our community college. Our feeling has been, and I think yours has been as well, that if we are spending money on training our people, that whether they stay in that particular job or go to another job, that is money well-spent. We are investing in our own citizens, and that has worked well for us. I want to take a moment to say, too, that although our budget is that 0.7 cents, we also recognize that the money that the commissioners give to public schools, to the community college, are as crucial to economic development and part of our support system as our own budget is. You will see miscellaneous, we just couldn't come up with a better word for that. The shell building fund match, the commissioners some years ago said to the private sector, "If you can come up with a half million dollars, we will match it for an industrial building fund." Private sector did that. The commissioners did that. We have built a couple of shell buildings, both of which have sold. We may be at the point in time, and we've been talking about this for probably the last year, that perhaps we need an additional... That we need to build a shell building. There is a good deal of research that will go into that to determine what size building should that be, where should that be, what exactly should that look like. Some things that we do not know at this point, if you've been following what's going on with their regions. Senate Bill 127 has passed that would dissolve the regions. That would have an impact on funding that could come back to the county for economic development. We don't know where that is going at this point. With the state's proposed public-private partnership, we do not yet know what that will look like. We don't know if there will be the expectation that each county have some sort of membership. So those are things that are not reflected in this budget because we don't know where those things are going. We have also supplied standby generation. We have cooperated with the county on the airport incentive program long ago. The Air Cargo Exploratory Committee, the Japanese Saturday School is one of those that is unusual. It is now self-sustaining. That was part of our effort to initially recruit Japanese companies that established them here. It both helped establish a Saturday School here and to assist the older kids in attending the school in the Triangle. At this point, parents pay tuition. That's self-sustaining. It has ended up being a fairly small investment for a lot of return. Over this 1987 till today time period, the total reported jobs and investment by new and expanding industries in these categories, and notice, we do not include commercial retail, restaurants, those kinds of things. We are, in fact, created as the Industrial Development Commission. 11,808 jobs, $1.79 billion invested. In terms of new companies supported by incentives, jobs and investment for the 39 projects that received incentives from Pitt County, 3,787 jobs and $1.7 billion invested. And as always, we thank you for your support, and I always make a point of saying, "We very much appreciate the people that you have consistently appointed to our board." We have been blessed with people from all over the county, from all different walks of life, people from the community college, from the university, from all of our different municipalities, and they have been smart business people that, once they were at the table, said, "I am here to serve my county, not only my specific community." And that has been a tremendous asset for us.
Okay, Mr. James?
I have several questions. First, over the years, how much has the... Let me go over here to the budget, the main part. Personnel expenses. What increase has been made there? I guess I'm going to be talking to the manager at the same time here. What percent increase have you had, we'll say, for the past three years on this?
Ours follows exactly what the county does.
In other words, you have had no raises for your people and so forth?
Right, right.
All right, going back, you said that we do not own any shell buildings. What happened to the one in Farmville?
The one in Farmville does not belong to us. It was built by the Pitt Green Electric Cooperative, so that building belongs to them as opposed to the county.
In other words, the county did not put any money in that, as we did the one out here that...
No, sir.
By Borough's Welcome.
Right. The two that we built, one is the one you're referring to, near Borough's Welcome. That is now owned by Metrics.
Yes.
They are manufacturing some potent products, and all of that material has to be kept separate. So the company bought that additional building, so it's almost like an annex for Metrics. And then the other building, which actually is in the Farmville Industrial Park, Coastal Beverage, is, in fact, being expanded now.
Uh-huh. And they... Who bought that?
Coastal Beverage bought it.
They bought it.
Right.
All right, the next thing, the... Let's see. Hold on. I have another question that I have here. Oh, yeah. The time that we spent, 4 million and 4.2 million, that was for pumping stations and so forth, and that money is taken out of the taxes in which they pay.
Right, and that's paid off.
In other words, now, we don't... We are getting full amount of money coming into this county from that particular transaction. Is that what you're telling me?
Yes, sir. It's paid off.
Mr. Manager?
Correct. After the incentives are paid out, and normally it's a maximum of five to seven-year period, after that point in time, then 100% of those ad valorem taxes are coming in to the county.
That wasn't a deal on this particular one, though. This came out from Green. We subsidized 4.2 million to put in the pumping station there at this particular place many years ago, and it was to come out of the taxes in which they were going to pay. Am I not correct?
You're talking about the Southwest Sewer Project?
Yes. This was there. It was before your time.
Right. Money statement, that is paid off, and actually, that is an income generator for the county.
Yeah, I know it is now.
And that did not go to the company that went to the utility.
Right.
It was on the same system that we did the one down here when we put the gas and the water in, in the wearable area so that they could expand that. Is that correct?
And added a pump lift station.
And we actually, when we structured that deal with GUC, Greenville Utilities Commission, we actually structured it so that we would share in the tap-on fees, and I believe the acreage fees.
Yes.
So, like I said, that's paid off. We paid our commitment, and we're actually making money off of what we invested in that.
Well, that's... I asked that question about two years ago, if you remember. They were still paying on that. And that's the thing, good people, that I hope that we can work out with some that has been up here, Mr. Chairman, on that. It's a payoff thing, but at the same time, we're happy in those... And that's the only way your subdivision order is going to work, too, on the same system. Something else. That's when I go ahead.
All right. There's a lot of words in there.
Commissioner Ward?
I think... Thank you so much for this report. I think it's the first time we've seen a kind of a history, and I think it's very important at this time that citizens realize how much has been done and accomplished. And one of the things that kind of comes out to me is kind of in reference to what Mr. James is saying, is that we have almost all of our municipalities set up so that if there was an opportunity for an industry, I know with the sewer and the water and, you know, the requirements that are... And we didn't have that a while back. So that's a good thing, and I think, and I hope, you know, municipalities are working, you know, hard, and I know they are with you all, and you all are working hard with them to try to get some jobs in some industries in these municipalities. I know Aiden has really come... I mean, I think a report from them like this would be good to have because of the... They've taken advantage of the water and the sewer and the connections that we've made.
Well, and if at any time the commissioners would like to see a breakdown on what has been spent in any given community, we can do that, too. Mandy loves a number, so the opportunity to split it different ways.
But I think that's a good thing to, you know, it showed... To me, it came to my mind, and I knew it was going on, but I hadn't really thought about how many of the smaller municipalities this has affected in giving them the opportunity to encourage industries and jobs to come to their communities. Thank you very much.
A couple of things that Andrew mentioned are true for us, too, as far as the electronic media are being used more and more, and I probably have said this to most of you at one time or another. At one point in time, we got to visit with a client a dozen times and to truly sell our communities. Now, most of it's done electronically. Even this last project that we secured was all done electronically. It was by conference calls and emails. That we never had a face-to-face meetings with our client.
Mr. Hammond?
Yeah. Wanda, does one North Carolina help you with any incentives?
It does. This time, the grant that went to ASMO was a J Dig grant, a Job Development Investment Grant. It's the first one we have ever received. It is geared to larger projects, which is why this project qualified for it. Right now, we don't know until we've got a new system at Commerce, we don't know if our funding support services from the state will look the same as they do now. We have been working on a revision of our strategic plan. It has just been time to look towards a truly new age. But what we are finding is that we have those unknowns. We expect to use... I mean, there have been a lot of reports done. We expect to look at the entirety of that mass of information and see what makes sense and what doesn't. But we've got, you know, again, that unknown. If the regional partnerships disappear, how does that affect us financially? If the state goes to a public-private partnership, how will that affect us financially, and what will we have to do? And at this point, we just, we don't know the answer to that.
Wanda, is the Arrow Shell Building over?
It depends on what you expect a shell building to do. A shell building does not mean that a company is going to come and buy that shell building. But what we do see, that if there is a shell building available, your traffic goes up. You have more clients coming through, so you have more opportunity to show the community to a wider group of people. It's also something you can say to a client. We have discovered that the Site Selectors Guild, which is the leading group of consultants in the country, have recognized and talked to each other about the pharmaceutical cluster that we have that starts in Eastern Wake County, goes through Johnston, Wilson, Nash, and ends in Pitt, that that is a solid cluster. We can recruit there. So if we built a building that would appeal to that industry, then that may make sense as a shell building. If we're building it because... If we're building it because we think that that means six months from now a company moves into it, that's not what happens. It generates traffic.
Well, I want to thank you for your assistance and help last week. You informed me a lot. I was in the conference room with one businesswoman, talking to an individual from one North Carolina at the same time on the phone, talking to you, and I just wanted to know that they helped you with any incentives, because they are quick to come down and ready, to stand with you when they're announcing something, when you're announcing something. But I wanted to know, were they ready, equally as ready when it's time to ante up, to, to help you land something?
Well, our office tries to promote our community, and when I say "community," I mean our whole county and our individual constituent communities as opposed to our own office, and sometimes that may not have served us well. But we are about what is good for our citizenry and how we best serve them. I would make the distinction, too, because we do in our office, between economic growth and economic development. Economic growth is what happened last week with ASMO. We have 200 new jobs, we have a $93 million investment, and we will take that every day of the week if we can get it. On the other hand, again, some of the things Andrew referenced, when we talk about economic growth, we are talking about long-term and how we want this community to look. That may be workforce development, that may be education, that may be recreation and the arts. And that being said, there is an event this evening at the Umbrella Market that include, it was a city-county manufacturing and arts collaboration.
Okay, any additional questions? Commissioner Webb?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Wanda, Senate Bill 127, though it's passed the Senate, it's not passed the House yet, and some of us will be in Raleigh for County Assembly Day next week speaking to our representatives. Is this something you feel would help or hurt us?
Let's take a moment. There are two very definite sides to that. The regions have served as marketing arms for us. There were, so, for instance, the BioEast Alliance, which was a cluster of Pitt, Nash, Edco, Wayne, and Wilson Counties, came out of the region. Some of the work being done in workforce development is from the region. They have been the point organization on those kinds of projects that did cut across all of our county lines. In our particular case, and our region is different, it started out as the Global Transpark Region. So, you will recall, we all paid a $5 license tag fee. So, at the eastern region, there is, for Pitt County, it's approximately $2 million. There is a fund there that if the region was dissolved, that it would come back to Pitt County. It's earmarked for economic development, it would have to be used for that purpose. So, there would be funding that we could use in that way. What we have to weigh is, do we get more from that regional organization than, than the dollars? How, how does that balance out? If, if the alliances are going to be realigned anyway, and that one we expect to happen, and I don't know if all of you are aware, it will be the DOT regions, we would be part of the northeast region, but that would not, there would no longer be, I know this is complicated, there would no longer be the, the marketing component, there would no longer be the partnership. So, we would continue to partner across some county lines. It is a very complicated question to answer. Would I like to have $2 million? Yeah, we wouldn't have to worry about where the money would come from, from a Shell, for a Shell building, or how, if we've got to pay to play in a new public-private partnership for the state, where that money would come from. We wouldn't have to be digging out of our budget or yours to come up with where that comes from. On the other hand, if that region goes away, I don't know who then champions workforce development, the automotive industry as a whole, some of those particular sectors.
I've scanned through the bill, and it's not clearly defined in there, and that, that's also part of my concern, is what the long-term effect would be, even though we might get that initial boost.
Yeah.
And maybe it's something that they need more study on, and it's hard to focus on any specific bills because the General Assembly is moving so fast right now.
Exactly.
And that's just one dream, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot with a complex question.
Well, again, for us, it's really complicated, because we would like the opportunity to really go through that line by line and say, "If this happens, then this is good for us and this is bad." And as you said, there are so many bills moving so fast, and many of them relate to economic development, that it's, it's very difficult for us to know how to call it. I will say, our relationships with our sister counties in the eastern region is very strong. They have been made stronger because of the region. I don't know that we would have the relationship, for instance, with Wilson County and Green Counties that we currently do if we had not gotten to know each other really well through that partnership. So, there's, there's a lot to be lost, too. It's a tough one.
Commissioner Rawlins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Wanda, I want to say to thank you, you know, on behalf of the citizens of Pitt County for working entirely for the announcement of the additional jobs at ASMO, and this, this is a strong boost for Pitt County citizens, something that we certainly need. You mentioned the Japanese Saturday School support. Tell me about that. This is the first I've ever heard of that, and I...
It was a long time ago. Ninety-five, ninety-two?
Ninety-four, ninety-five.
Ninety-four, ninety-five. Have to, have to have an extra brain with me here. ASMO was our very first Japanese company. Typically, when Japanese companies locate in a community, there is a Saturday school. Their concern is that, and typically, it is the dad. It's, you know, we, we say "the spouse," but typically for the Japanese, and at least at that time, it was the dad, that if the dad was going to be in a foreign country for a three-year period, and that was usually what it was, that it was very important that the children keep up with their Japanese language skills. Their alphabet is not our alphabet. We're talking about far more characters to learn, to keep up with their own culture, but to have the same education so that when they went back to Japan, they could immediately go into the school system. This, the money was apportioned over a number of years. Initially, there was some support just for sending the kids to the Triangle, because there was already an accredited Saturday school there. What initially was, with an eye towards developing here, our own Saturday school. Chicago Massey was really instrumental in helping develop the first few years of the local Saturday school, because the parents said, "We don't want kindergartners and first graders on a bus," even though there were parents to chaperone, "going to Raleigh and back every single Saturday. We need something local." So, the way the school here evolved was to really look at those first few grades. It now includes opportunities for American students to also take those classes. So, it is, is larger than we expected it to be, it is accredited for those grades. We no longer provide any financial support for that, it is self-sustaining, primarily from student tuition. I think that some of the, I think maybe Fuji and particularly ASMO, because they have more students, do some support. But it also now, you know, when we were developing it, it was for the Japanese company coming in, but it also includes physicians from Viedant, you know, their children, it includes university folks, and it includes the industrial community from around the region with their children enrolled.
Okay. Did your commission have anything to do with airport expansion?
Sir?
Did your commission have anything to do with the airport expansion project?
No, that's, that's really Jerry Vickers. Airport expansion, we have not been involved in.
I wanted to ask this on behalf of the North of the River. The industrial park that we tried to get started out there some years ago, working with Martin County...
Yes, sir.
And I'm, every time I meet with the Mid East, which is quite often, I encourage them to cooperate and to work with Pitt County, because those people there, you know, sign up the land and so forth to go into the industrial park, and we hooked up with Martin County, because they are able to get their label cheaper than Pitt County because of the, what they have to pay in low wealth. Is anything being done pertaining to that part of that? And I know what really killed it, when Greenville Utilities, and this goes back to the incentive that we gave to Burf on the $300,000, we were hoping that, as they went to Burf, that those people would be able to tap in on that sewage line, and as you know, they don't tap in on it. They can't, because we don't have the pumping stations there. But that goes back, but what, is anything being done pertaining to the development of that area?
We have, pardon me, we have a meeting scheduled next week that includes the county manager from Pitt County, from Martin County, the economic development staffs from both counties to talk. As we've discussed before, we really, at the time we were developing the park, there were grant dollars available for infrastructure, and now those have just dried up. So, we're going to look at what those options might be, to see what can be done with that park. This is another one of those things that, we don't know if it'll make any difference that now we will, potentially, that we will also be in the northeast region if then we can say that entire region has poverty issues and that maybe we can leverage dollars from USDA or something. We just don't know.
Yeah, and I know what happened. Of course, money dried up and that killed the project, but at the same time, I think we need to let those people know that we haven't forgotten them.
Absolutely.
And it's very important, and I would like to see you get Mid East, they deal with hundreds of thousands of dollars, to get them involved pertaining to this particular. I have talked to them. Of course, we've got a U-MAN, that's a different one.
We really think that the Mid East Commission is probably our best shot...
Yes, it is.
...at finding the amount, because, you know, we were talking about $4 million. Now, we're probably talking about $6 million. So, we, we think it's gonna take...
I'll meet with them tomorrow, and I'm going to encourage them, Mr. Manager, to get up.
Did you have some closing comments? Because I had a couple of comments I wanted to make.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, let me just say, first of all, I really appreciate you coming before us and giving us this presentation. I think it's long overdue, so I appreciate you coming. I wanted to also observe that one of the most impressive charts in your presentation to me is the one that talks about the job growth and the investment growth from 2008 to 2012. Now, over the last five years, we know that economic development has not been very good, and there is a perception that it has been essentially dead here in Pitt County, and that is not the case. We have created 1,163 jobs and $453 million in investment. If you add the latest announcement, ASMO, we're talking about 1,363 jobs plus $545 million in investment, and that's been over the last five years in this significant economic decline. So, we have done a good job here in Pitt County, and I know that a lot of it is as a result of the work of the Development Commission, and I also know that a lot of this investment and these jobs have come through existing industries. And we have a person in the Development Commission that is devoted, Scott Pogan, does an outstanding job, a very sharp young man, and he interfaces with these existing industries in an ongoing basis, and it's gotten some very positive rewards for us here in Pitt County. So, we have made some success. Do we want to do better? Absolutely. Are we going to do better? Yes, we are. The other thing I'd like to point out, as you alluded to, this Development Commission Board is an outstanding board. It is comprised of citizens throughout Pitt County. We have the, the bigger entities represented on there. Viedant has a representative, Pitt Community College, East Carolina University. It is a very good board, a board that is dedicated to economic development here in Pitt County, a high-quality board, and they are working hard for Pitt County, and I want to express my appreciation for all of those, because they volunteer their time, their service, and their expertise, and you, we are blessed to have those people who are willing to serve on our economic development, our board. They were my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
One word of explanation I would offer, too, you know, there's not always an announcement in the paper. We follow the preference of the company. If a company has a contract with the Department of Defense and they say, "We don't need this in the paper," then it's not in the paper. So, and you won't see a story on our website, that we follow what the company expects.
Thank you, Wanda. One question for you, Wanda?
Yes, sir.
You just made the comment I was going to make, but just the question I have is, in the past 12 to 18 months, there's been a number of studies released in Pitt County that different entities have undertaken. Obviously, the Development Commission has done the Biggins-Lacy-Shapiro Study, the, there's also a Branding Study underway by the Convention Visitors Bureau and the City of Greenville. City of Greenville, the third study has just published or released their own economic development study, then the fourth one being the Insight Study that recently came out, I think, the public releasing last week. I guess my question is, Wanda, how much input of the data that you presented this morning to the Development Commission here, do you feel like was incorporated into the Insight Study?
Not very much. The interaction that our office had with Insight was that Kelly Andrews, who is our marketing and recruitment person, took them around to see sites and buildings, and then they, they did send us some emails that we responded to. The one time they sat down with any of us, it was a few of the county commissioners, some of our board, our staff, it was a 45-minute session. I asked on four different occasions if they would, that I thought that it was important for them to sit down with our staff to talk about how we handle projects, what projects we have, and we did not have that opportunity.
I think it's important to note, I think there's, for all the different areas in county government, we can always do things better, we can, if that means restructuring or, and such, but just wanted to point out that there is a recommendation in the study that we dissolve the Industrial Development Commission and the Committee of 100, combine them into one new nonprofit board, then the three cents from the economic development tax would, you as a Board of Commissioners would basically feed that to this nonprofit and let them lead and guide the economic development in Pitt County. Not to say that that, I'm not sure what, what the boards desire in that is, but just wanted to point that out, and that, that there probably is another next step, next level we can take things to. I'm not sure if it's all the way to what Insight is recommending, but didn't want to give you the opportunity to say what had or had not been included in terms of the accomplishments of the Development Commission.
We're keeping up with all of the studies. There are some things that recur, I mean, something like a Shell building comes up repeatedly. That's something to, to study. I will say, the, the city study that was specifically for the city of Greenville, it is not county-wide, but of the five targets identified for the city of Greenville, they are consistent with some of the ones that we use for the county. That article, their study has not been in the newspaper, so you would not have, have seen that document, but if you'd like to, I can get that to you.
Okay, any further discussion, questions? Thank you very much, Ms. Yuhas. We will now have a break, and then we will come back for our educational session with Pitt Community College and our Pitt County Schools. Welcome back to our Budget Workshop. We will now continue on with our agenda, and we will have a presentation from Dr. Massey about Pitt Community College. Welcome to our group this morning.
Good morning, Mr. Garris, members of the commission, guests. It's my pleasure to speak with you again, and let's see. This is really a great time of celebration for Pitt Community College. We just had our graduation, and Mr. Garris, thank you very much for serving as our speaker at that. We had 950 completers of degrees or certifications, 500 only crossed the stage, but they all enjoyed your remarks, Mr. Garris, and thanked those commissioners who were able to attend the ceremony. I know it's a busy time of the year for everybody. We also have our GED and Adult Basic Education graduation tomorrow night at the Greenville Convention Center. We'll have another 125 completers who are honored at that ceremony, so lots of good things going on, and we're very pleased to share some of that excitement with you. Let me introduce the, the couple members of the Pitt Community College family to you. Let me introduce the couple of members of the Pitt Community College family to you. First, our Vice Chair of the Board of Trustees, Mr. Kelly Barnhill Jr. Thank him for coming. Also, from the staff, Mr. Don Heisey, who's our Vice President of Administration, and Mr. Ricky Brown, who is our Chief Financial Officer at the college. We've worked hard on this presentation and I thank you for the opportunities to speak to you during the year. So I don't feel like I have to give perhaps the level of specificity that I had in the past because I've given you some information as we've gone along. I thought I'd show you a few slides. Oh, before I go forward, I want to mention that Mr. Paul Davenport sends his regards. Mr. Davenport is the Chair of the Board of Trustees. And as you know, he had a stroke. He's resting at home, going through rehabilitation. I shouldn't say resting too much because he's out there exercising all the time. And he wished he could be here today, but he couldn't. But we're looking forward to having him back at our meetings soon. He's got a great attitude and things are going very well in his recovery. These are a few slides of the facilities that you helped make possible and that are being fully utilized at Pitt Community College right now. What you see here is the Russell Building. That previous slide was the front entrance of the Russell Building with a few of our students. You can see that from this perspective, which is just about on Reedy Branch Road, that the parking lot, of course, is full. The facilities inside are even more remarkable than the outside. I wasn't that impressed with the building when I first looked at it, but when I went through it, it has so much to offer inside and we are very, very grateful for the support that you have helped provide. This is the Construction Industrial Technology Building, which has become a showcase for a lot of people all over the state who've come to see our facilities in supporting automotive technology, building construction, and some of the other trades. We've attracted a number of high school programs, both from in our district and outside, to display different projects to them. This is one of the classroom views and this is the, on the floor, the shop floor. It is a great learning facility and I'm proud to say that our graduates in automotive technology has significantly increased this year, partly as a result of these new facilities. And you know, people are keeping their cars longer these days, so they need more maintenance. So this is a growth industry for our area. Speaking of growth, Pitt Community College continues to grow in terms of enrollment. We were one of only six of the 58 community colleges in the state of North Carolina to show positive growth this year. And it was significant growth. As you can see, 5.28% growth between spring 12 and spring 13. We saw an even higher rate of growth when we took fall into account, but I wanted to show you the most recent statistics. This is somewhat counter to the movement in the whole country of community college enrollments, which have started to see a little bit of a decline. That's partly because the economy has picked up. And so normally, there's an inverse proportion between community college enrollment and the economy. When the economy goes up, the community college enrollment goes down. We are expecting our new student numbers to start to level off a bit. But at the same time, we're working hard to retain students longer to graduation. And if we're able to do that, and we've already seen some gains, we will definitely continue to increase in our enrollment. We feel that that will follow through on the investments that you and the people of the state have made and will enable us to more fully support the local economy if we get people not only to start the community college, but to finish the degree programs that they've begun. Now, a little bit of information about county funding per student, and I did include in your original packet some comparison information there, too. The state average for all North Carolina community colleges shows an amount per student of $850 that is funded. Pitt County funding per student, and this is as of this year, is at a level of $599 per student. That ranks us number 43 of 58 community colleges, so not a very high rating. And you might think, well, the support per student would be higher at the smaller schools because of their smaller enrollment. And that's not exactly true. Ashel Buncombe Technical College, which is in a city not all that different from Greenville in size, is significantly higher than we are. I think they're in the top five of funding per student. So we have been in that location for a while. We're doing everything we can with the funding you make available and we will continue to do so. We appreciate the support you provide, but we are certainly at a deficit compared to the average. If you were to fully fund our request this year, it would still leave us $1.5 million short of what the average is for the state. We're not beginning to say we should be at that level. This just gives you some context in terms of comparison. This is a quick summary of some of the elements in our budget proposal. I can answer questions related to any of these at the end of the presentation. First off, we're asking, we know that last year was a very difficult year. We're asking for a restoration of the budget cut that we took in last year's budget. Actually, as a result of that budget cut, we came to you twice during this year to dip into fund balance to pay for some expenses that we might not have had to do if we would have had these extra funds. Energy cost expenses went up $101,000, so we're requesting that. Facilities repairs and renovations on our campus, we have had a regular, I guess it's a natural deterioration in the condition of some of our buildings. We've been able to do some work, but these are the kind of expenses that gnaw away at you. And that's our largest budget increase item. Also, a salary increase item, and this is for only the county-funded employees, which for us are simply public safety, maintenance workers, grounds people at that level. So for a total additional funding of $444,000 in the operating budget and then the capital outlay, which is an extra $75,000, as you know, that number was decreased last year slightly. So we're asking for a resumption of that level in the coming year. That is for a total operating and capital budget request for 2014 of $5,170,326. Again, that would not substantially change our position in terms of comparison with other counties, but it is something we could definitely live with and we would move forward in our service to the area with that funding level. I thought I would give you just a little information on the building space. You've heard me say that Pitt Community College is the most crowded of all 58 community colleges. And I thought I would just give you a little information. I think I distributed the handout related to a declining level of square foot per student across the state. Eighty-five square feet per student is what the, is the average of the state. There are some that are much higher than that. Obviously, there are some lower and we are at the lowest. That 40 square feet per student, I'm sorry, that reflects the most recent official information from the state of North Carolina. But we've done our other figures and we've actually gone up to 45 square feet per student based on the new buildings that have become available that I showed you earlier, the Russell Building, the Construction Industrial Tech Building. That still puts us some 10 square feet below the next most crowded community college, which is Stanley Community College near Charlotte. Alamance is just a little bit above that. So we are still at a significant deficit compared to our peers and compared to what our needs are. And if you would come over to the campus any weekday between 9:00 and 1:00 p.m., you would see the hallways, the classrooms being fully utilized and overutilized. So we are still very much working with a deficit of classroom space. Also, wanted to give you, the manager, and we met recently and he asked for capital improvement plan update. And I have, I'm not able to do that for you today and I will convey that to the county manager shortly. But I do want to just list some of the priorities that we have in our capital improvement plan. A science building happened to be mentioned by Wanda. I wasn't sure she would refer to that. But our biotechnology program continues to be at the tech center, which is close to DSM and METRIC, so it is fairly close to where students do some internships. The difficulty there is all their other courses are on the main campus. And so the split of space is not to the advantage of the students and we are short of space in that facility. Also, we are paying rent to the Development Commission at a level of about $40,000 a year for that space. So I know you don't especially value rent going out. Of course, it is to another government-funded agency, but we feel that it would be much better to bring that operation back to campus and have it in a science building with our pre-engineering program, our physics program, and a lot of our other natural sciences. That's the area that's the highest priority for next building on campus. We're also looking at development of a Farmville Center. This goes back to 2008 when we did an extending learning to the Community Task Force, followed up in 2010 by a trustee group led by trustee Charles Long, that focused on where do we need to start providing substantial coursework in the community. And Farmville has been targeted as the number one priority there. And finally, the basic law enforcement training. You may remember that we are now offering most of our basic law enforcement training in the warehouse in back of the Greenville Center. But we've outgrown that facility and would very much like to, and we've identified another option for an existing building, we could move that into. So we would like to make that shift. That would also free up that warehouse space for customized training and industrial training that we could do on that site. So you'll receive more information about the capital improvement plan within the next few weeks. I look forward to sharing that with you and to answering any questions that you have on our budget proposal today or anything else. Thank you for your patience and for your support of Pitt Community College. I think I'll end with the pictures of the students. They're always better than watching me.
Thank you very much, Dr. Massey. Any questions or comments of Dr. Massey?
I have one. The property that we bought out of North Pitt High School, why isn't that basic law enforcement building, what is being done with that property?
Okay, what we have on the, on that property is a firing range.
So you don't have any law enforcement?
We have, I mean, our basic law enforcement training students are doing their pistol shooting and firing there. And that facility is shared by the city, the county, and other entities.
I guess where I'm coming from, doesn't that go right together with basic law enforcement? Wouldn't it be best to have them all on the same page, so to speak, the same area?
The long-term plan for that facility is to add a driving pad. You probably remember, when I came 10 years ago, that was part of the plan that was on the table. Not only a firing range, but a driving pad facility for criminal justice and law enforcement vehicles. They've actually also now expanded that idea to include fire facilities, which has escalated the costs substantially because of the weight of those facilities. That pad would take up a good portion of the additional property there. But in answer to your question about basic law enforcement training, there are many other elements to that program and it does not need to be that far removed from the bulk of the population in Greenville.
I know when we purchased that land, best I can recall is about 90 acres of it, which is a large tract of property there. And I know you've got to have a lot of stuff going on 90 acres.
And we've done significant infrastructure on that property to allow it to become a potential site for other operations. But that driving pad is probably going to take up a good portion of that property.
Is anything being done pertaining to fixing the road up, asphalt and so forth, so that you can get to it without the dirt roads and so forth? What about that?
Not that, not that we're not, we're aware of. We don't feel like that's, that's part of the property.
Well, you know, there's two ways to get to that, coming from Highway 1113, coming through all paths.
Right.
I think it's newer to come through all paths than this day on that.
I could look into what could be done.
I'm just, I know we had those things, you know, the county bought it and then we turned it over to the, to Pitt Community College because we thought that you all could get more benefit. And we certainly got a good buy. We've bought that property. I feel like we could make some money.
And we're really, really grateful of that and we're fully utilizing it now. It's just that, at this point, it's a question of how much more development can we do?
I guess the main thing that I want to know, though, is, in this budget, and I was asking the manager, we are falling, what percentage did you tell me about 175,000 and you would be happy with your budget? You could serve the students as you think they ought to be served.
Well, the proposal that we made, which is summarized on the materials you received, is about 175,000 more than what the county manager proposed.
Okay, all right. That answers my question.
Very good. Commissioner Webb?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Massey, when we look at funding structures, and especially when you're talking about increasing funding, I like to take into account the quality of the output and the partnership of the entity. And I have to say that yours is exemplary in partnering with economic development. I think economic development would be set back were it not for Pitt Community College and the job training that they're offering. And I think the output of the individual that Pitt Community College is turning out is above standard in every way. They're ready for the jobs when they get to them. It's a less philosophy and more practicality and they're ready to work when they get done. And I think that goes very high, especially when you consider the price that they pay to receive that education. That they are getting their most bang for their buck at Pitt Community College. And I think that we should support this. I don't think it's unreasonable and I think that it's a definite investment, not just in education, but in development and in preparing our workforce as we continue to grow in this area. Thank you for what you've done.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. You know, the community colleges, part of our definition of being is partnering. We're between the schools, the high schools, and the university. We're between the high schools and the workforce. We're working with the high schools very closely in terms of some cooperative programs. So I think, you know, it's part of our DNA and we accept that and welcome it.
Commissioner Coulson?
I would hope that the board would seriously consider 100% funding Dr. Massey's request. I think it's very much in line with being reasonable and I don't think he's, I think he could have come here and asked for the world and he's not. So I hope that we'll fully fund you.
Commissioner McGowan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have been served on the PCC Foundation Board, Dr. Massey. I certainly see the critical need that Pitt Community College provide for the students in our community and preparing them for the jobs opportunity. Now, ASMO is one pivotal example of that. And I continue to support that need because I think that when you have that type of relationship, the community and relationship and the service that you all provide is to move Pitt County forward. So I appreciate what you do and appreciate your work.
Well, thank you, Mr. McWhonhar. We appreciate your participation on the PCC Foundation Board. You know that the PCC Foundation was largely responsible for the Herman Simon Health Sciences Building that we opened up. You helped with that, but they were the primary driver. And whatever capital improvement plan we will talk to you about- plan we will talk to you about, we'll have some built-in partnerships with the local business and industry and private, private contributors that will make your funding go further, because that's, again, that's part of our partnering.
Good. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I, I just wanted to state that I'm particularly appreciative of the joint endeavors between Pitt Community College and the public school system of Pitt County. I think we have some strong alliances that will pay dividends in the future.
I think a good example of that, just coming up, and perhaps Dr. Emery would mention this too, is we have partnered on the Aiden Grifton School doing welding there, and we're looking forward to seeing that operational this fall. So, you know, we're doing what we can to extend our services, there's a very rigid structured program that the state has put together, but I think it still allows partnering, and we, we welcome that.
Commissioner Ward?
Thank you, President Massey, for your presentation, and I hope that we'll be able to revisit at least and see if we can't do something about if we don't bring on all of what was requested, at least part of it. Is there anything specific that you can think of that would go to the wayside if that, this additional funding does not come forward, and we don't, you know, it's not broken down for us in a line by line, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, so if something doesn't come to mind, that's.
Well, I, I will tell you that the salary increase category, we are asking to make up for the salary one point two percent that the state gave, the state employee, state-funded positions last year. That is a fraction of that salary increase line, I think it's about ten thousand dollars. We try to keep all of our employees level. It's tough, when you work together every day, some people are county-funded, some people are state-funded, not to give the same increase, so if you weren't to fund that portion, we could still make it up, I'm sure, but, you know, we would, we would prefer having the full funding request that we've made.
Okay, thank you again for everything you did.
Thank you.
Good. Did you have another question?
I don't have a question here, I have, do we give our manager directions, don't we?
We, no, we're going to do that later.
Okay, that's all.
Because we're going to cover all.
I don't think we've got a problem with what she's talking about.
Very good.
I think this is already, this don't go.
Dr. Massey, thank you very much for your presentation, and thank you, your staff, your board, for all you do for our community. As it has already been stated, you are not just an educational institution here, but you are a primary piece of our economic development, and we appreciate that, so thank you very much.
Thank you to all of you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is our public schools, and Dr. Emery is going to come forward and present that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hope you're all doing well, we appreciate this opportunity to have a few minutes with you. Let me also start by thanking Pitt Community College, and I guess they're out the door, but we do appreciate the many partnerships we're able to offer our students, and you all know many of our students now graduate from high school with an associate's degree because of the opportunities both online and on campus to partner with PCC. I'd like to say thank you to Michael, Aaron, I don't know if you all have met Brock Letchworth, who replaced Heather Mayo, Brock is a Pitt County Schools alum, and we're delighted, he used to work for the Daily Reflector and then taught for us in middle school, and we're delighted to have him on board as our new public information officer, and also a special thanks to Barbara Owens from our board for being here this morning. Let me also say, without sounding like a schmoozer, how much we appreciate the cooperative relationship that we have had with this board. All of us who have endured the last five years of economic downturn understand that it's not just you, it's not just the school board or Pitt Community College, any entity that has had to survive has had to make tough decisions when it comes to budget time, and we really appreciate what has felt to us as a partnership in moving through those times. We have worked hard to make those tough decisions and protect the classroom, and I believe, while sometimes it's risky to say with less money, we had better outcomes, it's important for us to note here that at the end of last school year, Pitt County Schools had the highest composite scores we've had since they've been measured, the highest graduation rates we've had since they've been measured, and the lowest dropout rate. Now, are those where we want them to be, just as you talked about economic development? No. We exceeded the seventy percent rate for composite score, and that's the highest we've had since the state of North Carolina has been measuring that. We've gone from a fifty-eight percent graduation rate to a seventy-three percent graduation rate since the state has been measuring the cohort graduation rate, and we set a goal to reduce dropouts by fifty percent in five years, and we met that goal in four years instead of five. Can we stop? Absolutely not, but we are very proud of what has happened and done during some very challenging times economically, and so we do appreciate very much your attention to that and your support of that, not just as commissioners, as a body with your support of our schools, but individually with your public presence and your, and your visible advocacy for those efforts. So with that, let me say that we are incredibly appreciative of Mr. Elliott's recommendation to you to fully fund our request. We believe it's reasonable, and it is a restoration, not in fact new dollars, but a restoration of dollars that we have reduced over the last few years. We so appreciate that because it will allow us to do something that was a conversation here earlier in the week and one we know you here as well, as well as we do, which is, if we can fully fund this request, we have folks working right now to move quickly on a math textbook adoption. It is the textbook that we rely the most on and need and is well overdue, and while textbooks are a state responsibility, and the state has not adequately funded it, it would allow us to move forward on that adoption. That despite the fact that in our state budget we face the loss of a hundred and twenty-five teacher assistants based on Governor McCrory's budget, a nine hundred thousand dollar reduction in our low wealth dollars, which we have had to take from remediation services so as not to affect classroom teaching positions. That is not your budget, that is a state budget, which is continuing to be argued, but we, we have some bright spots in that budget because of your ongoing support. Fully funding our request to you will allow us to mitigate some of those teacher assistant positions for another year and to try to do as we have done over the past few years, and that is use turnover to reduce. We lose about forty positions a year, and over a two-year period, it would be our goal to not refill those positions as opposed to taking people who currently work for us now and telling them goodbye, you don't have a job. We also appreciate the restoration of the capital fund, which allows us to continue our routine and scheduled maintenance primarily of windows, roofs, and paint. And then the two hundred thousand that is specifically there that Michael will talk with you more about will allow us to sort of correct an action that we took in good faith several years ago, and while it may have been a little short-sighted for us to eliminate our beginning teacher supplement, at the time, that action was taken to preserve jobs, and it did in fact help us keep more people in the classroom. As time passes on, it has made us less competitive out there with surrounding counties in recruiting and retaining our most qualified teachers. So, I'm going to pass this over to Michael and let him share it with you in more detail, and then we'll both be back for any questions that you may have of us.
Good morning. I too would like to echo Dr. Emery's words of appreciation, and thank you for continuing to promote education as your top priority. You are the foundation of everything that we do here in Pitt County Schools, it all starts right here. We do respect you immensely for everything you do for our students, and those are just not words. We, we joke all the time that we actually enjoy coming to talk to you and presenting to you more so than we do our own board, but, so hopefully that won't, that won't change after, after today's presentation. But, but again, this is my, this is my tenth. Okay, this is my tenth budget presenting to you, and it's actually a sad time for me because this is my last one that I get to present with Dr. Emery, and she has been here for the last eight, and I'd like to say over that timeframe that we have worked hard through her leadership and through the commitment of the Board of County Commissioners to work together for the benefit of our students and create a, a level of trust in that we are on the same page and doing everything that we can to not only provide the resources to our classrooms, because it is a lot more than, than dollars, but also in a way the moral support because of the issues that we deal with, with twenty-three thousand five hundred students are unimaginable on a daily basis and what comes to, to school with our students. So again, thank you for that opportunity to, again, to speak to you and everything that you do. First of all, I would like to talk about fund balance and, and where we have been over the last several years with concerns to our undesignated fund balance, it's kind of been the elephant in the room, so to speak, as we've had some, some conversations with where we are as a school system. For the two thousand eleven, twelve fiscal year, the undesignated, unassigned fund balance stood at approximately three point seven million dollars. That undesignated fund balance at the beginning of this fiscal year stood at two point five million, and what are we projecting for next year as a starting point of approximately one point two million dollars? This does represent undesignated fund balance, does represent dollars available to the board for appropriation, and in a way, as it is with, with your county budget fund balance, it is our, our savings account. If we look at the change from the beginning of the year to where we project next year, we have a hundred and forty thousand dollars set aside to help cover the unitary status case, to argue that case in court, online testing appropriations to ensure that we are ready for the state mandate that all students are, are tested online at the end of the year for, for testing, and to delay the impact of potential cuts in teacher assistance. Dr. Emery was alluding to the, the governor's budget and what's going on at the state level, it's a hundred and seventeen million dollar reduction in funding that's been proposed for teacher assistance. That equates to about a hundred and twenty positions for Pitt County Schools that would be lost as a result of that, and to be mindful of that's a hundred and twenty taxpayers here in, in Pitt County and are a stimulus to the economy of Pitt County, we, we had strived to use one-time dollars to let that happen on its own through, through natural, resignations, terminations, and, and retirements. So, that's where we are with, with concerns of teacher assistance, and from what I have understand, that is also, I'm getting word that that's also included in the Senate's version of the budget that is probably going to hit the, hit the street at any given time. So what does that mean? Two point five million dollars worth of undesignated fund balance, that's a little less than five days, will carry us through about lunchtime on Friday if the mess really hit the fan. That's the beginning point. If we look at how many days of operation that is for Pitt County Schools moving down to a one point two million dollars worth of undesignated fund balance, that's about two point two days, we could get almost to lunchtime on Wednesday. Again, it, worse come to worse, and we kind of look at, you know, everyone has their own reasons for carrying fund balance, whether it be Pitt County Schools, the community college, and Pitt County Government. I don't think that we are out of line, so to speak, given that we are a two hundred million dollar budget, serving over twenty-three thousand five hundred students at more than thirty-five facilities, four million square feet, with over three thousand employees being conservative in that. We look at our capital fund balance, that has been almost cut in half this year, using fund balance solely to fund projects that, you know, we continued to move forward with even after the capital appropriation was reduced down to zero. So if you look at that on a per square foot basis, it's about twenty-two, twenty cents per square foot for four million square feet, and again, I was telling Aaron that, you know, he could probably come, Mr. Bowyer, come and give his own update to the board with concerns to our, our long-term deferred maintenance needs, which total over thirty-two million dollars at this point in time. It's everything from roofing to paving to HVAC and so on, so there are needs out there. Fund balance has reduced at the same time that local appropriations have reduced as well as state allocations have reduced. County appropriations over the last two years, more than a million dollar reduction, over a million forty-five thousand to be exact, and state funding has reduced by over ten million dollars, and I know that that's the state's responsibility. I like to look at it that we've, we've never requested a dollar of increased appropriations to offset reductions in state funding, we've done that internally as a board, using either fund balance or internal redirections. When you look at where that has come from as far as state funding reductions, vast majority in the classroom, classroom teachers and teacher assistants, but textbooks as well, you heard Dr. Emery say that the state's responsibility for textbooks, that's an annual reduction, a million, one point one million dollar reduction in dollars dedicated for textbooks that we have seen reduced in Pitt County Schools. The funded positions have reduced by over a hundred and sixty-one, classroom teachers, teacher assistants, clerical custodial, and moving forward, we're looking at approximately five point six, five point seven million dollars as state budget reductions if that continues to move through the general assembly, with teacher assistance being the, the major component of that, it would be about a five point four million dollar impact to Pitt County Schools. Question here today as we move forward is our requested proposal for the two thousand, local proposal for two thousand thirteen, fourteen. We have an operating budget proposal of approximately twenty, thirty-five point nine million dollars and a capital budget of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. County appropriations comprise thirty-five million, eight hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars of that total, about ninety-eight percent of the total revenues. That's a one point four million, one million four hundred and eighty-one thousand dollar proposed change, increase basically, in appropriations from the current fiscal year that we are in. It's made up of two components, reinstating the capital appropriations of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars as well as requested increase of seven hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. The requested increase itself is comprised of the funding of fixed cost increases, inflationary increases, five hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, as well as a new money request of approximately two hundred thousand dollars. So why reinstate the capital appropriations of seven hundred and fifty thousand? And again, we have, not going into a lot of detail here, Aaron could again provide probably a good hour or two in service on what our capital needs are, but when we just look at very generalized projects and needs, we have safety and security equipment needs for, to protect over twenty-three thousand five hundred students and more than three thousand employees. We have over thirty-five facilities that cover more than four million square feet. We have a couple, several that were built in the mid to early nineteen hundreds with over another fifty modular units that are being used with classrooms, thirty-two million dollars worth of deferred maintenance projects that have already been identified, just to be able to upkeep with, with time, and it's wear and tear on our buildings. More than three hundred buses maintained and serviced in a garage over forty years old with antiquated equipment, approximately twenty-three activity buses, more than twenty years old with a replacement cost of one point eight million dollars, and technology needs of over one point one million dollars as we move to online testing for our students. These projects won't go away, we can push them continually down the, down the road, which will actually compound the, the end cost in order to complete them. The fixed cost increases, these are increases to maintain the current level of operations, there's no new projects, no, new programs to be funded, just, just to keep up with the level of inflation. of inflationary increases and increases brought down from the state level. 1% increase in state salaries, again projecting off the governor's proposed budget. Over 5% increase in retirement costs and health insurance, as well as the increased cost of workers' compensation, property insurance, liability insurance. I just want to stress, that is not an increase of new projects, new programs. That is just to keep up and to maintain the current level of operations for Pitt County School. A new money request of $200,000. Compensation incentives awarded to beginning teachers that, you know, we've discussed, you've seen in the paper, heard about the 5% supplement removed for beginning teachers until they earn tenure to the completion of their fourth year with Pitt County Schools. That was part of an effort to balance our budget. We have had over $10 million worth of state reductions and over $1 million worth of local. Somewhere in between 0 and $11 million, we've had to make some tough decisions. And I dare say that there's any organization that's had to cut over $11 million out of its budget that they can't, in hindsight, come back and say that that might not have been the best, in the best long-term interest of our organization. And because teachers are our lifeblood, you know, they're the ones that make the magic happen. And we are competing with other school systems that, we're not at Wake County, we're not at Johnson County, but still in the eyes of a beginning teacher, a math teacher, a science teacher, CTE, EC teacher, you know, we are the shining star of the East, so to speak. And those are the, we are competing with those school systems to get the best. This is happening at a time where our funding status in the state has moved from 25th in 2004 to 42nd in the state for this current fiscal year. And no, we're not trying to keep up with the Joneses. We are trying to maintain that star that everyone sees Pitt County as being. I know I end with this every year, I mean, you can change that up, but this is how I look at it. I grew up in Bear Grass in Martin County, and I can tell you, on Friday and Saturday evening, this is where my family came to shop, to eat, to go to sporting events. So, I mean, my road was half dirt until I was like 13 years old. So, you know, I understand that, you know, the rest of the state, the northeastern part of the state looks up to Pitt County. We are, you know, we exemplify Pitt County. And that's what we're here for, you know? We want to build on that relationship that we've had. We're being upfront with you. These, we have learned to run a tight budget, I'm telling you, over the last five years. I was just looking at our local positions. This might have been a question someone's gonna ask, I'm gonna go and throw it out there. We had about 340, 350 positions locally funded as of about five years ago. Now, it's less than 260. That still might be kind of high, but that is a dramatic change in local use to fund positions at Pitt County Schools. So we understand how to run a tight budget, but we are honestly asking for dollars to help fund these areas. And we come to you with good faith effort to make that come to fruition so that we can put the money in the classrooms with concerns to capital projects, funding the increased fixed costs. Because unfortunately, if we don't receive that $531,000, we will be back at the drawing board, looking at which areas need to be redirected and cut. I was really hoping that this might be the first year I didn't actually have to go to a principal and have them have to talk to their teachers or their custodial classified staff about, well, we might have to cut you a couple hours again next year. And to this point in time, we have not had to do that, which again is a bit of a change from where we've been the last several years. And a new money request to be able to reinstate that beginning teacher supplement or to provide a retention bonus for those that have committed to Pitt County and making Pitt County where they want to raise their families and to support the economy here. I'll turn it back over to Dr. Emery to do a conclusion.
Do you have questions?
I'm sure that we do. Are you ready for questions?
I think we're ready to go.
Okay. I believe I have to come to Mr. Johnson first. Who else?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm most appreciative for being the liaison between this Board of County Commissioners and the school board and the administration of the public schools. This year, as in all other years, but particularly this year, I'm appreciative for the work of the county manager and the finance officer in working with the public schools in their effort to be as productive as they possibly can be for the benefit of the students of Pitt County. This year perhaps is better than last year, but I don't know what better is. We still have some challenging financial issues. But the two people seated before us here have made a strong effort, I think, to work with the public schools in preparing a budget. Repeatedly, as I sit with the school board in their meetings, I hear, what can we do to improve the educational opportunities for the citizens of Pitt County? And I'm confident that the school board and the administrative staff are interested in improving the educational opportunities. And I believe successfully. And I, for one, am most appreciative of that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner James?
I have many concerns. First, I probably wouldn't be saying very much if we had used money, fund balances, to buy textbooks instead of buying commotion things such as that. You can spend your fund balance as low as you want to. I know enough about money to know that. And what I want, of course, is, and I've already instructed the managers what I want, we don't want to interfere with the amount of money that you're getting, but we certainly, and we don't want to interfere with the low wealth situation that we've had to deal with each year. But I want them to come back with the amount of money that we can, because we got a lot of use for money. But let me say this to you. Here in Pitt County, and I've been trying to get this for years now, I've been to Aston, the superintendent, Board of Education, why do we have to have 28 units to dredge away when the state of North Carolina is only 21? When, if you had 21, they could take 28 if they want to. But it seems to me what you want to do is to use additional classroom space. These people could be out working, or they could be learning a trade and get out in the working world if they didn't have to do that. That is one of my main concerns. But I was a classroom teacher for 35 years, and if I went in that room and didn't have a textbook, I was in trouble. And a lot of these teachers, the reason that they, so many of them are working their butts off is because they've got to get in there and print all of this information that they don't have, that they've got to teach, that is being mandated by the state of North Carolina in Raleigh. So I'm not laying all the blame on you all, but I'm laying a lot of it. Because you ought to go off and you ought to got those kids, those teachers a textbook, some kind of weight, Mr. Chairman. And instead of spending this money one way, they should have gone that and done those things. Textbooks and like that, the fund balance, the hospital makes $112 million. They go out and spend it all. How much have they got in the end? It's a nonprofit. They got nothing in the end because they spent it all. I'm the same way in my business. I can spend as much as I want to, and my priorities is not the same as yours in a lot of cases. Let me say that to you. And there's nobody, you might say, well, Mr. James, you're against education. There's nobody here at this table anymore for public education than I am. Believe me, there is. Well, I want the money that we give to you all to be spent in a productive way, not wasted. I want it to go to the classroom where it is needed, not upstairs. And I don't have the answer for it, but some of it, and I'm not about to say here what I do know or what I hear, because I know half of it's not true. But at the same time, where there's smoke, there's fire. And I hope that what I want, and I'm gonna be in the end, I'm gonna make the motion. The manager already knows this, not pulling any bones about it, but I want to see a little of this funds, I want to make sure Pitt Community College and so forth, I want us to spend money where it's really most needed, Mr. Chairman. And that's all I got to say.
Okay. Commissioner Webb?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your presentation. I want to tell you it was excellent. Sometimes my tone isn't always very complimentary. That's only because I recognize the importance of the school system and the high standard that I have for it. And, but also recognizing our statutory obligations as a board, sometimes easy to forget those. So I would just request that you do work with the sheriff on the security issues in seeking more SROs and work through your board and their statutory abilities. And, you know, I've received a lot of information, not complaints, but statements from people about unlocked doors at schools, one of the most basic security issues. AG Cox, I was told, has not one locked external door. That's where a lot of my concern is, is that we're not even doing the smallest things. And I know that in the next year, in the next school year, that there's a lot to be considered and a lot to be done, and I know a lot on your plate. And I know academically, you've come so far, but I do worry about the school's safety, and I don't want to make sure that we don't lull ourselves into it and it can't happen here, kind of mentality. And in speaking of statutory authority with boards, it would be appreciated for me if the General Assembly went by their own statute and gave us that $1.2 million they owe us in lottery funds. If we're gonna tax the poor with a lottery and make a law that says the money has to come back, then it should be followed. I think $75 million statewide, 1.2 to Pitt County. And that would go a long way towards your capital improvements, I think, as well.
As well as some of the safety and security measures that we have, that we want to do with some of the capital money.
Right. I saw that in there. And your presentation was really excellent, and it covered a lot of my questions before I even had to ask. So really, I was just making statements about, I really would like to see something very comprehensive, even little things like potentially giving safes in the SRO offices for long gun access. It's a long walk, depending on where they are, to their car if they need access to a long gun. They need to have their equipment immediately. And I saw with the capital improvements, I'm assuming this is door entry and camera upgrades and things. So I appreciate that. And like I said, it was an excellent presentation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If I could just respond really quickly to that, too, I wanted, I know this was sort of source of conversation earlier, and I just wanted to make a couple of comments. First of all, we just, our board just heard the results of a three-month safety task force, and some of that was, it was not dollar-related, but those things you talk about, which is reiterating our commitment to some of those things that don't cost us money, awareness and training and doors locked and those kinds of things. We were blessed with some contributions we didn't expect that allowed us to spend some dollars, close to a half a million dollars that will be predominantly in cameras and buzzer systems. But I do want to just clarify the SRO issue because I think whether it was through the media or other comments, it's been a little confused, and I don't want anyone, you or our community, to think we aren't willing to work with those situations. Couple of things I want to say. First of all, we had a 24-hour notice on the cops grant. It was brought to us last Tuesday, and we were told that we had to have an answer by the end of the day on Wednesday. And I'm gonna be very blunt. When me spending $3,500 on an investigator in an athletic eligibility issue gets drug through the media, I'm a little reluctant walking out the door to commit $60,000 of money without my board committees having an opportunity to have some conversation about that. And that was the response that went back. Not that we weren't willing, but if we had the time, we would like our board to have an opportunity to say yes, instead of Bev, who's leaving in six weeks, saying yes and somebody else saying, mm, I'm not so sure I would have spent the money that way. Second point, it was listed in the media that the county or the sheriff pays for those SROs. They do not. We pay for them. A half a million dollars a year that we pay, and we pay for them out of remediation dollars, which will be reduced this year because we have to make up the slack in the $900,000 we will lose in low wealth. So the revenue stream that we typically use to pay for those has also been reduced. I do want to say, and I want to thank Mr. James, and despite the concerns he's had that we may not have addressed appropriately, I'm gonna miss Mr. James tremendously.
Will that be a pleasant miss or an unpleasant miss?
Because he, his issue always causes us to reflect and look back on, what are we, what are we doing and what aren't we? And, you know, we get along just fine. I don't want anybody to think that I don't love Mr. James. I will miss Mr. James. But I do want to give him credit. I want to give him credit for an idea, and it's just one in leaving, and I don't mean to be the little, you know, gnat in leaving. But Mr. James, years ago, brought up the issue of why do we need our SROs in schools for 12 months when we only use them for 10? And we worked very hard and got nowhere. But I will tell you, just for your information and put it in your back pocket, if we only paid for 10 months, we would save $85,000 a year, and we could buy, without a grant, two more SROs a year. Now, there are lots of logistical reasons why that doesn't work for the SROs, and it doesn't work for the sheriff's department, but it's not an idea worth giving up on. And we've continued to try to work on that. So I do think it's important that we, you know, sometimes we look for, where's the new money, instead of trying to look at, how do we create money to do the things we need to do within our existing budget? And so we're always willing to do that. In fact, we had representation from all of the law enforcement agencies on this safety task force to help us look at what do we need to be doing. And so I want you to know we're committed to that and in working with those agencies. And, you know, sometimes it's just an issue of time, and it's not that easy in a really short window of time to turn around and say yes to something even though you may want to, so.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Ward.
I want you to miss me, too.
I'm gonna miss all of you.
We're definitely gonna miss you, and I just want to say publicly how much, it has really been a pleasure working with you and your team. And I can't say that at this time of the year for us in the past. So it really has been, you all have, your presentations have improved, you have expanded them, you have been right up front with us, and we just appreciate that as commissioners so much. So we will be missing you also. The one question I had was about the, I hope I've got this right, the $900,000 for the, to retain the, is it 120?
Yes, it's 120 TAs. Basically, the current proposal on the table, or at least that moved forward through the Senate and the House, was that funding for teacher assistance would be removed from grades three, two and three, and only be funded in grades kindergarten and first grade. That to Pitt County Schools equates to 120 teacher assistant positions that if moved forward as of July 1st would no longer have a job.
And that's not one per grade level for, I mean, one per class for every, I don't, I'm not sure that the citizens understand that, that many times you will have one TA serving nine second grades in a large elementary school in some capacity, many times, many different ways.
In fact, Commissioner Ward, I think three or four years ago, say three years ago, we actually had already reduced the number of days employed for all teacher assistants by 10 days.
Right, I remember.
And actually kept their number of hours employed at seven instead of eight. So in essence, we've already reduced our So in essence, we've already reduced over 92 positions. This would just actually be bodies.
Right. Well, when it first started, teacher assistants first started, there was one per teacher full-time, and they were called reading aides and assistants. Now, I don't think they were, were they called reading aides?
Reading aides.
Reading aides. And that was issued by the state legislature to focus on improving the reading skills of students. And then the reading assistants evolved.
Their roles dramatically changed.
As total education assistants. And one of the things that's important to remember about those is, you really need somebody who, you know, when you hire somebody in that position, there's a lot of things now that they are expected to do and required to do. If you're taking this out of your fund balance, that means you're funding a recurring expense that will be here again next year for those hun, and I know that you are going to reduce the numbers some by resignation and retirement and whatever, but still, it really kind of frightens me when you take money from the fund balance for recurring expense. And I know you don't have anywhere else to go. I understand that.
And it's based off of the size of the school system and the historical number of turnovers, whether it be due to resignation, retirement. We think that we can use that to, hey, these were lightening the blow. Let it happen naturally.
And I understand that, and then they can be looking, have time to look ahead. And I think that's what you're saying.
Yes, that's right.
And I just kind of wanted you to say that, instead of saying we would expect to keep this going on, so.
And a point about the math book adoption, there is considerable increases in funding for textbooks in next year's budget. And like Dr. Emery alluded to earlier, we are moving forward to try to put that into motion for next year.
Because the state is just totally, they have really reduced. I mean, I know they have put some back in there, but it's just been really reduced. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I've sat here today and listened to the various and different approaches to solving problems, and all of them have been interesting. But for some, Mr. James refers to 35 years, which I have greatest admiration for. For some 40 years, I've dealt with school budgets, county budgets, and education has always been the top of the line, whether it be in K through kindergarten, whether it be Dr. Torrell degrees. Our county manager and his staff has presented a budget to us, which has met the needs for the education, whether it be public schools or whether it be Pitt Community College. He has presented a budget which I think is adequate and fair to meet the needs of educating our students. I think that we need to commend the manager and his staff for that. There's no question that any budget can be critiqued some and added to. To me, as I said previously, education has always been my foremost, from county government, public safety being second, and health and welfare being third. I think there's been some mention for all three of those areas made. The manager and his staff needs to go back and bring back some resolution as to some of the requests that's been made pertaining to those three. And, Mr. Chairman, I hope that the manager and his people can come back and bring us that information as pertains to the health, as pertains to requests for a community college. And other than that, I think that the manager's budget has been on kilter with what's been requested from most of his agencies. I think it's a very good budget. Mr. Manager and your staff have done a good job, and I believe you can come back with some recommendations that will enhance us to meet these needs.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Coulson?
Is there any supplemental pay beyond the new teachers? I mean, in the past, it used to be a certain percentage.
Yes, teachers still receive a 5% supplement.
Does the administration receive supplemental pay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. See, now here's where I would draw the line. I personally don't think that anybody that's in the administration should actually receive it, with the exception maybe of principals and assistant principals and below at the schools. They're in the trenches. They're the ones that are actually doing the educating. And to kick it upstairs, want savings? I think that's one place where you can save money. I believe that the schools, the general perception I have, is still that you're more leaning towards pushing kids towards college-bound. And yet vocational education keeps getting reduced, or even if you can tell me in the last four years, because I'm not sure, because I've been gone, that where is that? And what are you doing to actually improve that? Because there's probably 50% or more of the kids that are more interested in going into something like automobile mechanics or becoming an electrician or whatever. And while certain education is universal, the fact is, is I believe the dropout rate is directly proportional to the kids that are wanting that kind of education, and yet it's lacking in the school system. And I also believe that, that right now, the dropout rate, a big chunk of the reason why it may have been lowered is the economy. There's not even, there was a period where there was not even, I'm going to say, low education need type of jobs. Do you want fries with that? And so kids may be more encouraged to stay in school now. Another thing that I think the schools need to do is to promote parental, I'm going to say, activities, involvement, something that gets them involved. Because, I mean, my wife and I, we read to our kids before they could even walk. And I know many people that have successful children, they educate their kids well in advance of going to kindergarten or first grade. And one of the big lapses I see is where parents, they may be able to have offspring, but they aren't really parents. They don't love and they don't nurture. And the school system doesn't seem to be, I'm going to say, have a very strong community outreach in that way. And what I'm saying here is, I know it's a big want and a hard do. As far as the number of students, how many students would you be burdened with if there was no homeschooling, if there were no vocational schools, I mean, no charter schools, or if there was no private schools? You would have mess. You'd have a lot more students, and where would you get the money from? My point is this, is that I believe that the increase, the dramatic increase in homeschooling and the dramatic increase in public schools and the cry from the public for other types of education, other than public education, is a reflection on the public's concern as to the degree of success that education has actually made its full contribution to society. They are feeling, I'm not, I'm not going to send my kids to school because they're not going to be safe, they're going to be bullied in some instances. The administration, quite frankly, is you guys scare the heck out of the teachers. You may not ever hear from the teachers, but the teachers are fearful of you. So when you've got, when you've got the majority of your people that work for you scared of you, that's not a good thing. And somehow or another, that needs to be lightened up.
Well, let me, let me just say, you need to see our climate surveys, Mr. Coulson. Our teachers anonymously, through the state, not through us, can do a teacher working condition survey. We also do our own climate survey. It's totally confidential. They're being printed. I will be sure you get copies from all the schools. That's not what our teachers tell us. There may be a teacher or two talking to you, but I also need...
More than a teacher or two.
Okay, but I'm just saying, you are painting with a broad brush.
Well, I am.
The entire administration of this school system, and we, we understand there are people who may feel that way, and they talk to you, but we also collect the data. And I would ask you, before you publicly paint the entire administration of a school district as people being afraid of us, that you look at our data. That's all I'm saying.
All right, well, send me the data, but I'm telling you that there is, there's a climate out there that feels that way. And taking that off the board, do you disagree with anything else I've ever said, or I mean, that I've said here?
Well, I would like to say that this body, because they have supported us and funded us, has allowed us as a school district, one of the few, I would be willing to bet in the state, we supplement career and technical education. We have more teachers and have actually added courses during the last few years of difficult economic times because of the focus in our community and the needs and wants of our students, quite frankly, who sign up for them. We've also been blessed, as you heard earlier, with partnerships from Pitt Community College, which allow us to offer some things that on our own we might not be able to do. So I think our students have definitely been the beneficiary of that. The other huge partnership that helps our kids get ready for the workplace is the partnership we have done with the Career Readiness credentialing, where all of our juniors now take the Career Readiness test. It's paid for by a grant that the community college received, and it allows them to take specific career and technical education courses in their senior and senior years that get them that credential. And more employers in Pitt County are now recognizing the Career Readiness credential. And so a student could graduate from high school and take that CRC out to an employer in Pitt County, and the employer would know that they have a certain skill level that might make them more than, do you want fries with that? And it helps those kids get a job, as well as it helps the employer.
Well, and I appreciate that, but I think that the vocational education really needs to go down to the lower grades. I think it really ought to start in middle school, because that's where kids are starting to form their opinion. And I'm going to say, I was one of them, before I went in the military and became a linguist, is I graduated in high school right dead middle in my class, because I really was not that interested. I was more interested in becoming jet engine maintenance. That's what I really wanted to do. And then life circumstances changed that. But regardless, it was the military that woke me up mentally. And when I came out and went to school, and at that time, I was, I was prepared to go to college. Out of high school, if I'd gone to college, I probably would have been able to struggle through, but I wouldn't have enjoyed it, not like I did after the military. But anyway, if I painted something with a broad brush, I, I still feel that way, because I hear from an awful lot of people. And I guess maybe I'm not hearing from the ones that are yippy and saying everything's hunky-dory, and all I hear...
And, you know, let me say, our teachers this year have had to entirely recreate all of the content standards. The state of North Carolina made that wise decision for us. All of the content area standards have changed at one time. The teacher evaluation instrument is changing. Teachers don't know until next week, when they begin giving kids assessments, what those assessments are going to be like, because they're brand new. So are teachers stressed out and overwhelmed? Absolutely. And, you know, with, with good reason. Has there been a lot of pressure on them? Yes, but there's been pressure on everybody, because we don't have a lot of choices about what those expectations are. So I'm certain, because we hear that, the frustration and some of the anxiety about the unknown of how they're going to be evaluated when they haven't seen assessments, and then those brand-new standards. When you add to that the fact that these people have seen a 1.2% increase in their salaries in the last four years, yet they continue to have expenses, healthcare, et cetera, et cetera. So I don't want you to think I'm being Pollyanna about the concerns or the anxieties out there. But our data doesn't show that that is, I'm afraid of my administrator. And I'm glad you brought it up, because I'd like you to see the kind of data we collect and what it says.
Is, when the data is collected, is it 100% anonymous? There's nothing that would trace the, be able to trace the person back?
Absolutely anonymous.
Not even to the school?
Well, we break it out by school, because we need to know it by school in case there's issues in that data that we, that we need to address. But it is broken out by school, yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner McGlaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Subtly, I want to personally and profoundly thank you for the job well done in educating our schoolchildren. Your leave is certainly going to be missed. I also noticed that there's $140,000 has been appropriated for unitary status appropriation. And I certainly wanted to, before you leave, and I'd like to comment on that in terms of where it is. I also wanted to just mention, having worked and had a career in law enforcement for over 32 years, I think it's ridiculous to even conceive of the fact that we want to reduce our SROs in schools. My true belief, belief is that a uniform officer is a deterrent from a lot of these, in this time and age that we're living in now, violence is prevalent. Not only you can, you can read your paper at any given time, maybe today, there's violent activities in school, some schools across the United States. So it is imperative, I think, that we need to have our SRO. I don't think we have enough. So I'm one that is strongly for the presence of SRO in our school system. If you could respond on that.
Yes, we're not, we're not intending to reduce. I think the COPS grant would increase, and hopefully there'll be a way to still work on that issue. And certainly, we agree with you on the, on the issue of, you know, continuing to try to find ways to increase that presence. I believe that you are exactly right. It is a deterrent. To your unitary status question, we are scheduled to go to trial the week of July 22nd. We anticipate that won't, it will take longer than a week, but less than two weeks, and we are prepared. Since we were ordered to be prepared in December, the extensions requested by the plaintiff have just given us additional time to prepare for, for our case. So my prayer is that, one of the things I will leave, even though I'll be gone, but I'll be subpoenaed back for that, is that at some point, the hard work that's gone into this will, will declare us unitary. And I think while that means a lot to our community financially, it means that that litigation piece that's sort of always hung out there over our heads can be spent on SROs and classrooms and TAs and those, and those other things. So we don't expect, you know, we don't expect at the end of that trial, Mr. McGlaughlin, to have the judge, you know, he can take three, four months to make his decision after the trial. But we anticipate that we'll have, have that piece of the journey completed by that two-week period in July.
Thank you. Okay. I believe everyone's had an opportunity to speak. Let me just say that it has been a pleasure working with you, and we're going to hate to see you go, but we want to wish you the very best of success in your new assignment. You have an excellent team in Aaron and Michael. They've always done a very good job, a very professional job. This has been a very good presentation. I would also like to say that I am very pleased with the addition to your staff level of Brock. I've known Brock for many years. He is a very fine young man, and I'm very pleased that he was chosen to be in this position. I'm sure no one will be disappointed in him.
Not at all.
I've set you up, buddy.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Two, two very quick questions, and I think you've already answered this one, but I want to make, make sure that it's clear in my mind. The additional dollars that you're requesting, the 1.4, I know the 750 is a capital, and the rest of that money, none of that is to compensate for the loss in state funds?
No, sir.
Okay, fine. You said that's four, but I wanted to make it clear. One other point, on page 12, on page 12, where you talk about the reduction in state and local funding, I thought it was interesting, and I think I know why, that you did the reduction in state funding since 2008 and the reduction in local appropriations since 2011. I would have expected those to be on the same basis. But if you did the local funding since 2011, that would not be a red number, would it?
It would, I would have to go back and check that. It might not be.
I don't think it would be. Oh, thank you.
The, uh, basically, it was the down-
I think that was your strategy. I'm familiar with that strategy.
Okay, now.
So, my point is, if those two numbers were on the same basis, we at the local level have done better than the state.
Absolutely.
Very good. Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Appreciate you.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda, uh, Mr. Manager, do you have anything you'd like to say in closing before we go into our discussion and directives and questions?
No, other than we do have some data from DSS that you asked for yesterday. If you would like that presented now, or we can wait?
Uh, I tell you what I would suggest, that we take a five-minute break and let us kind of get our thoughts together, because what I am assuming that we will do in this directive and questions discussion, that we will give you our opinion on the finalized budget to be presented at the public hearing. And, uh, why don't we take about five minutes to get our thoughts together, and also for some of our senior members to take a bathroom break? Welcome back after our break. We've had a very good budget presentation today and Monday and Tuesday, and I appreciate everything that the manager and his staff has done in putting this together. It was, uh, much more of a pleasant experience than it was last year, so thank you very much. What I, what I, excuse me?
Could we pass up the information on DSS first?
Yes, I think you already have. I've got it on my desk.
Yeah. In front of you, you have the, um, a couple pages of, of data. One deals with the amount of money and Christmas donations they receive for children and adults in foster care program. That's 18,029. Then also, you have the, for Commissioner Coulson was asking about the percentage of overhead compared to total services to the client, and for their total overall budget is 4.35%. That's on the bottom of the, the last page. It's broken out between, um, the cost directed to clients, salaries, operating expenses, and then whether it's budgeted and not in budget or not, is whether it's local funds or state or federal funds.
Okay. Any questions for the manager on that? Let me start out our summary, uh, and then we will decide as a board what we want to do. The way I see this now, our next step is for us to give whatever direction we feel is appropriate, and maybe, um, after you receive the input, Mr. Manager, you can kind of give us a brief overview at our regular Board of Commissioners meeting on Monday, and then we will finalize that product to go to our public hearing.
Sure.
What I have heard, uh, from, from, are my own thoughts and some of our board members, I would like to see us fully fund PCC, and I believe that you said that would be another And I would also like to see us fund the half a person for the Health Department, to make that a full person, which would be another twenty, I believe you said. So, we're talking about an, an additional 200,000. And I, I always like to say, whenever I suggest that we add anything, that I also give you a corresponding idea as to where that money can come from. And what I have concluded on this is, in, in the, in the conservative revenue forecasting that we have done for next year, I think that we could probably find the 200. And if that is, uh, an unrealistic assumption, then you can let, let us know, uh, Monday evening. But they are kind of my thoughts, and now, open up and let the rest of our board give their thoughts and what their recommendations are, directions are to our staff.
I like that approach from my standpoint, Mr. Chairman.
And I do, too.
Mr. Chairman, I like that approach as well.
Very good. Any other comments?
Yes, I like it itself. I would like to see, and I want, what I told you pertaining to low wealth for the Pitt County schools, uh, I have had many come to meetings, says the schools get enough money, but they need to spend it more wisely, such as buying those textbooks. You people, now, let me tell you, when you spend your, uh, uh, fund balance down $2 million, and you didn't put any of it on textbooks, and things such as that, then you, I don't care who you are, you're not a businessman and you're not using your head, because that should have been the number-one priority. Is those, that is not only for the students, it's for the teachers that are in that classroom. I mean, it is, I feel really bad that I didn't, three years ago, that I didn't really do what I'm doing now. They're taking, they're getting there, and let's do something. And if you don't think a, a budget, you can spend the money down any way you want to, gentlemen. You know that. I don't need to tell you. So, it's not buying any money, it's not raising taxes. Well, you know what I'm talking about. The motion will be made if you don't, anyway. And if you don't receive a socket, that so be it. But I'm going to do it because I think it's the right way to go.
Very good. Any, any additional direction comments? Yes?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to know what the effect would be if we joined the Chamber of Commerce, not just the main one, but the Aiden, Winterville, Farmville. I think that as a county, we need to appear to be open for business and support small business, and I think it's, uh, pretty nominal fees. It's not much. It gives us a voice on the boards, ex officio members, and it gives us insight into their thinking instead of waiting on presentations, when we can already have the information ahead of time.
I agree with that also.
The way I have personally solved that with Winterville is I joined myself.
I did, too.
That's the only way you're going to do it. I'm opposed to it, but that's all right.
Okay. Any further direction or comments? Mr. Manager, you need anything else from us?
We have it. Mr. Holder, you have anything? Vice Director?
Just thank everyone for a pleasant first experience.
Yes.
Very good.
You don't have your crown yet, but you're almost it.
I'm going to say this to you, for you all, for you, are we still on TV?
Yes, sir, we are.
Well, anyway, I'll say it anyway. But I'm going to tell you, when the manager told me, or told his group, that we might open this cell block, $800,000, that's a cent tax increase, that could happen. And don't, don't underestimate it. You bother to be cutting some money down, instead of spending all that you got. And that's the only, I'm kind of disappointed with Scott pertaining to that. Because he's going to come back in, when the federal government says, look, you're going to open this block, you're going to come out with that cent additional taxes. Did you know that? Of course you know it. You can ask him, Scott.
I do want to say, we, we are adding to fund balance. We're not continuing to spend fund balance. This will be the, you know, the next year in a row that we've gone from 12.0, 13.67 to projected 14.8. Hopefully, we'll exceed the 15%. So, we will have the fund balance savings there, and if we had opened the E-block at mid-year, talking about $400,000, and hopefully, the sheriff could also get some additional federal prisoners and/or state misdemeanants to help, help offset that cost. But right now, what, what the sheriff and I are saying, if I can kind of speak in that stead, is that we're not anticipating that we would need to open it until July 1 of 2014, which would be the following fiscal year. And yes, there will be about a $900,000 cost there, about a penny on the, on the tax.
Yeah, that's what kind of got me upset. I don't know how many of you caught that, but that, it got me a little upset. And we have got to look out for things such as that. I really believe it, Mr. [inaudible]. And this is one way. If, believe me, if I thought for one minute that that little cut from the Board of Education would hurt them, I wouldn't say anything. I really wouldn't. But I know what, it'll never make a, not one bit of difference. And it will make a whole lot of difference to a lot of poor people when they up their taxes, which evidently, some of them around this table are looking forward to do it. That's all I got to say now. I hope that's on TV.
Very good. I don't know who you're talking about, Mr. James, but anyway, any further additional comments? I'll have a motion to adjourn.
No adjourn. All right, now, we adjourn.